He is.
Where you sitting?
I'll get a set.
He's right there, sitting in the backseat.
Oh, he better get his little butt up here.
Chair might need a white one.
On this.
I'm on it, white blue on.
I have to anybody.
What's that?
There's express of those if anybody wants.
Right glasses, I can't.
Do you want Bob's? He's got his, you could try his.
I don't know what these are. Man, I'm sorry.
Good, how are you?
So that's on this. Just be able to flip those on and off.
Scott not coming?
I hope he does.
You got your phone, Missy?
Yeah.
Would you mind texting my wife and telling her if this is going to be live, please? Please? Oh, I don't know your wife's number. There you go. Man, I might need that. Go out to my truck and get some different glasses.
What time is it? I don't even have them on with me. See what you're doing?
Yeah.
How are you, Darrell?
Good, how are you, Vaughn?
Good.
Good. Good to see you.
Don't start.
No, we gotta wait for Scott.
Yeah.
Scott's here.
Oh, is he? Where is he?
I would just lay down.
Is that him coming in or what?
Somehow it's about running into themselves. When they start smiling, I'll start running. Even the apples.
Sure.
Oh, you want to do that for tonight too?
Yes, I am. That's right.
She gave everybody a hand. Does she work?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you'll be racing out here in a little bit, yeah. Well, when you go, just ring him, and I'll go too.
We wish this couldn't table with anyone.
Alright.
See if Dave's doing his thing. Hi, will you call, hey, will you call Scott and see where he's at? Darrell? You call Scott and see where he's at?
You blame him? Let's see.
Has everybody signed in at the back of the room? Thank you.
Hey, are you on your way? Yeah. There's Scott.
Oh, here he is.
Nope. You look sharp though. He listens when I say, "Get over here."
Boy, he comes, doesn't he? Boy, he just listens to you.
Sorry, guys.
It's okay. Alright. We're okay.
So I don't see any meeting minutes in here.
No, we'll just move on.
I like that. We should do that with all this stuff.
Okay, can everybody hear me? Okay, now can you hear me? Travis, where are you?
He can't hear you either.
Okay, can you hear me now? Travis's microphone is not working. I want to welcome everybody out tonight. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for coming out. Um, we have some important decisions to make tonight. And we want to make sure that the right information's out there to all of you. So that's, that's why we're doing this tonight. Um, so, I have a full board. We're having a regular meeting Thursday, May 6th, 2021, 7:00 PM at the Town Hall. 3434 West, 3400 South Charleston, Utah. Um, first of all, we'll have a pledge. Uh, Jim will give a pledge. And the opening prayer we're giving by Darrell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be here tonight together as residents and friends and family in Charleston. We're grateful for this opportunity that we're afforded. We ask you to bless us tonight as we can have our discussions and questions and things answered that we can uh, be helpful to each other and to have good discussions and get answers to questions that we all would like to have. We're thankful for this free country, for the opportunities that we're afforded each day, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for April 1st, 2021. If you've had a chance to look at them, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make the motion with approval of minutes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Jim made a motion to approve the minutes. Uh, Vaughn seconded that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the minutes will be approved. Approval of the finances for April 1st. Um, if everybody has looked over them, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the financial report for April 2021.
I'll second it.
There's a motion on the floor by Vaughn, seconded by Scott, that we approve the finances. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, this is a time and place for any person who wishes to comment on items not scheduled on the agenda for public hearing. Any person or group wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the town council at this point by standing, giving his or her name for the record. Comments should be limited to no more than three minutes unless the town council authorizes it.
I've got a comment. Sean Taylor, I live over at the cemetery. So as some of you guys might know, I've been livestreaming the town meetings since about the first of the year. I've missed the last couple of them. And I just want to say that, that's terrible. Um, anyways, I just want to say that I feel it is the town's responsibility to have these meetings be livestreamed and be available to the city. And because they haven't been doing it, I've been doing it. And I think that every self-respecting town in the days of COVID has their meetings available to the public, both livestreamed and archived for future purposes. Two days ago, I was at the Riverton City Council meeting because I've got property in Riverton. And I chose to attend in person, but I didn't have to. I could've watched that meeting online. And I can go back and watch it anytime I want. I just want to formulate a request to the town board to take the initiative to livestream these on your own. That's my comment.
Thank you. Thank you, and the board will take that into consideration.
Link, Cabide. So how about some introductions? We want to know who's making these decis- decisions that's going to affect.
Absolutely.
So what, what is it?
I'll, I'll take care of that in just a minute. Okay?
Have them tell who they are.
Okay, just a minute.
Hi, Lynn Fountain, just straight through the field on the corner. Um, lifer here. Um, I'm just wondering if we could get a dumpster, a couple of dumpsters, and send them out here for cleanup, because I mean, I just went to the dump, it cost me 20 bucks. And, you know, that's just the first one.
Okay.
Just wondering if maybe.
We, we tried that one time and it didn't work, so we haven't done it since.
Life's, life's new again.
Right, right, so. We will, we will take that into consideration too. Karen making open that? Okay, any other comment? Okay. Alright, gentlemen, do you want to introduce yourselves? Start with you, Darrell.
Okay, I'm interested in who you are too.
Link, Cabide.
Cabide, nice to meet you. Uh, I'm Darrell Nish. I know, I think, a lot of you. I don't know some of you. Is this working?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I can't hear a darn thing. It's good. Okay, uh, my name is Darrell Nish. I live on the north end of town. Uh, I've been on the town council for four years or so now. Just me and my wife at home, three kids that are all gone. So we're here because we like our town, we want to keep it the way it is, and that's what we're here for.
Vaughn Rasmund, I live about a block from here. Lived in Charleston for about 45 years.
I'm Mayor Bernie Nikosloski. I've lived here for 49 years. I've been a very active part of the community for the last 15 years. And so.
Scott Solomay also live on the north part of town. I know some of you, but hopefully get to know all of you better and better. So I've been on the town council for about a year.
Jim Brown, um, my wife was born, raised here. I've lived in Wasatch County for most of my life. My grandparents are in Mallsburg. I live, what, two blocks away from here, I guess? And so I know most of you guys, and a lot of you guys came to me and asked me questions because of my other job, but I'm free for answers or questions if you guys have any, so.
What's your other job?
Sheriff.
Sheriff. You don't speed much, or you would know that.
You must be one of those people that don't speak.
I know exactly where you live.
Okay, now we're gonna go to the next thing on our agenda, which is our appropriation area that we have to promote permanent employees for Karen Mayer and Jamie Quinder. These girls have been with us for six months now. They've done an excellent job. They're learning very well. They're, um, and I have no complaints. Uh, board, this is up for discussion for you.
You're here every day. You recommend that we do that transition then?
I do.
I think they both do a great job.
I recommend that Karen and Jamie both be put in permanent positions. Um, also, I would like to ask the board to, uh, give them both a raise from what they have. And that's up to the board to decide how much.
What do you recommend?
What's the position?
Excuse me, I never heard, I don't know who's.
Say, what's the position?
Oh, they're clerk and treasurer.
Thank you.
I would recommend a dollar raise for Karen and a 50 cent raise for Jamie.
Where are they at now? What are they at now?
Uh, Karen is at 19, 18, and Jamie is at 1751.
I'll make that.
Um, which one of you? You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we I'll make a motion that we raise Karen's, uh, pay by a dollar an hour and Jamie's by 50 cents as recommended by the mayor.
And move it permanent?
Yeah, and move it permanent.
And make it permanent. I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Vaughn and a second by Scott to, for both these employment permanent, give Karen a dollar an hour raise and give Jamie a 50 cent an hour raise.
You're in a vote?
Yeah, okay, calling for a vote now.
Does it have to be a roll call?
Since you put financial into it, it does.
Okay, this will have to be a roll call vote. Darrell?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Scott? Jim?
Aye.
And I.
Can I just ask real quick, if you guys have something to say, just stand up so we can know who's addressing us?
Okay, um, we'll move on to the Kennedy budget. The Kennedy budget has been sent out to all of them. All of the guys. This budget does not have to be, um, action took on this tonight. I want you guys to take, I want you guys to take a good look at it. And if you see anything that you need, want changed or need changed, I spent about a month and a half on this, so anything you see that you want changed or need changed, please come in and we'll talk about it. And then we'll put the budget in for next month and have it approved, along with, uh, along with, uh, uh, revised budget. Yes.
Just to make sure that you understand, that, that it's on display for the public.
Oh, yes, if anybody wants a copy of that budget, it's, you can have a, there's one there. There's one there, there's also Karen. I'll have them in the office if you need one. Okay?
And the public hearing will be next.
Yeah, and the public hearing will be next month. Okay. Okay, now let's move on to the 24th of July's inauguration update. Darrell and Scott. Who's speaking?
Scott. I don't care. It's probably Darrell's turn. We're actually just kind of excited to be able to do this this year. I'm ready for everything to get party time again. So anyway, everything is gonna happen. On the 24th, Darrell and I met, actually met yesterday. And went through everything, so everything's scheduled to happen. The breakfast, the food carts, uh, everything will happen, the fireworks, the parade. It's all on track. So I think everything, everything's planned out well.
So the, the budget was set already from last year?
Mm-hmm.
For what we spent this year?
A lot of the 24th budget actually carries over from proceeds that are generated during that, during that, so it's not even, a lot of that doesn't even come from the city itself. So it's got its own.
The only thing that comes from the city is the breakfast on Sunday morning, or on the 24th morning. Uh, the city does pay for that for, um, all of town citizens and families, so.
And fireworks.
Oh, and the fireworks, right. But we have, we have, uh, some events paid for by the railroad also, so.
Do you have any questions about it, or? Does Darrell have one?
Darrell?
Does anybody have a question about the 24th? Yeah, have we been missing anything in, in years past that, that would be fun to have, or that would be some way to improve what's been happening? Go ahead.
We used to have three-legged races and gunning sack races and, oh, and we had calf riding and, you know, some, you know, and chicken grabbing.
So do you ride those, or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
First year here, I wanted.
Alright, excellent.
A video of it. But I was just thinking it'd be fun to get back into the good old stuff.
I love that.
And maybe even the bake. Uh, you know, have, have, everybody bakes pies and sells the pies, and most donations go to, to help in some food banks or something. Thanks, Abby. Some of you might know that Crane Ridge down behind my house is the only remaining building on the railroad. My next-door neighbor Jim has restored it. And he again wants me to have a little woman house there.
That answers our question.
Anyway, it's kind of worth seeing here, especially if you're an old-timey folks and like, maybe it's been kind of fun.
Thank you. Anything else on the 24th? I love, I love those ideas. I've written those down, we're gonna, we'll look into those.
Having a list of, you know,
There'll be a flyer sent out. Is that what you're talking about?
She needs to identify who she is.
And stand up.
Yeah, yeah, tell us who you are and stand up, please.
I'm Marco Howden, and I just think, uh, lists, maybe there should be like this glass of billow for it outside or something where we can put.
Public announcement.
Things like that.
We do have, we do have in the window. In the window we have.
Okay, in the window, the mayor's saying that in the window we have that.
Okay, great.
But that's a great suggestion, thank you. Anything else on the 24th, Darrell? Just, just so everybody knows, for residents of Charleston, you'll receive a flyer that will have tickets for the breakfast stapled to the flyer. You bring those, breakfast is free. If you're like Wes, you might get charged if you bring them. But everybody should receive a flyer with what's going on, as well as that will be taped in the display upfront.
One other thing that you might be aware of is, um, there are members of our community that volunteer to do most of the work for the 24th. And so as long as we have those people that volunteer and want to participate and do that, makes the 24th function very well. When there aren't people in town that want to do that, 24th is probably not gonna happen. Those of you that are speaking up, that say you want these things, you should be volunteering to assist.
That's a great idea.
I'm Andy, I just live along pros. Great idea. People that want these things need to volunteer. However, I've been here for 10 years, and the only reason why I get any notifications for anything is because of Maile and Kenderson. Which means that I'm not getting communications from any of the town.
Then, then we need to get your email address so things can get emailed out to you.
They're like, your email's not in here, why you get it? So when people move into the area, perhaps there needs to be some sort of communication. That would be awesome, especially when like we come in to register to vote, which now is also by mail, but originally it wasn't. And I can't get registered, perhaps that might be something to kind of like toss out there, so you're not like missing people through the cracks and stuff.
So just give your, get your email address to Karen, and she'll make sure you're on the list. Anybody that does not receiving anything, please get your email address.
On the sign-in sheet.
Yeah, you can put it on the sign-in sheet. I've got her. Okay, listen.
Yeah, Vaughn beat me to the punch. So if we want to volunteer, how do we do that? Because I've never been invited to volunteer.
You just get in touch with the, one of us and our, get in touch with our, our guys that's doing it.
Mention the committee that's been doing this, the sponsors.
Yes, we have a committee that's been taking care of this. It is, um, Melinda Yori and Colleen.
Cummings.
Cummings. Cummings.
Jane Mayer.
And Jane York. The last few years, they have been taking care of this and been doing a great job. They're doing it again this year. Lenny's been over the parade the last few years, but she's not going to do it this year. She's got other responsibilities. So I think Jane's gonna take it over this year. So if anybody else wants something going on and wants to do something, there will be the car show, there will be the vendors, there will be the music, there will be, um, food trucks. So, I mean, if, if there's something you want to do, yeah, we, we love to hear from you. You know, you, it's not just us that needs to put the word out, it's you guys that need to come in and say, you know what, I want to help, what can I do? So there's a lot of people here for, for five board members to keep in touch with every month, so we just need to step up and say, if you want to do it, come in and stay, and we'll find a place for you. Okay? Yes.
So Colleen Cummings is watching this live right now, and she's messaging me, asking me to remind you, continuing on what you said, that she needs lots more volunteers. And she also wants to remind everybody that there's a Facebook page they can follow for the festival.
Right.
So, Colleen would be the one to contact.
Yeah. Yes, Lenny.
Okay, I'm not gonna do a parade, but I am gonna volunteer in the committee, and that would let it, but first I want to know about the liability. Do we have liability coverage for this, and will it cover all things, what happens? You can't do a little buckaroo rodeo without liability.
Right, right. We do have liability insurance. We will have to check and see what it will cover. I'll have Karen check on that maybe morning.
Okay, I would like to have a candy cannon and shoot it off, and I would like to know if that'd be covered, in case someone gets hit with the candy, and I'll run that by you guys first.
Karen, you got that?
And I would do the three-legged races and things like that, if you guys want that, I can get it done.
Alright.
Thank you.
Colleen, did you hear that? Alright. So, anything else, guys? Okay, we're gonna move on now. We're gonna go into the CIR update, public hearing. Okay, this will be the instructions for the public hearing. You will come up to the mic, you will give your name and your address. You have three minutes to speak one time to the mic. If there is any questions to be answered, they will be answered after you have finished your three minutes. Please do not interrupt the one at the mic. They deserve the same three minutes as you have. First of all, we're gonna have a presentation, and hopefully this will answer a lot of your questions. This will be, don't ask questions during this presentation. I think that a lot of your questions are gonna be answered, a lot of the rumors are gonna be stopped right now. Um, there's a lot of rumors going around that's not true. Um, I want you to know that we, as a council and as a mayor, are an open book. You can come in and look at anything you want. You can check anything out you want. And, uh, And, uh, so we'll start with the presentation, which one do you want to be first?
I think Wes, you're on it.
Okay, Wes Johnson. Wes Johnson is our engineer and he is gonna show you how this is gonna work.
Do you need another, do you need another colored pen?
I've got it right here.
Okay. Yeah, you can move that anywhere you want it, Wes.
Can I move it to a better angle? Let me kind of just start by, this kind of all came about.
A little closer, I need.
Can you hear?
No.
Turn it on. How about that? You know, it's interesting, I'm very comfortable speaking in front of the public, tell you, hand me a microphone. This kind of all started out with Winterton Road as it was failing, uh, it went back to Mayor Koalas saying, how do we fix this road? We've got fifty thousand dollars in our road budget to cover all of Charleston. We looked at it and said, that's Winterton Road's about one point three, one point four million dollars. So if we ignore every road in Charleston and save all of our road fund, in about twenty years, we can rebuild Winterton Road. Well, in twenty years when we're ready to rebuild Winterton Road, we'd be rebuilding every other road in town because we could ignore it. So we looked at, like I said, this went way back to, to Mayor Koalas. Uh, when Mayor Kozlowski came in, we looked at it and said, one of the obstacles that Charleston's facing is we don't have a revenue source. We don't have a commercial base. It's a very common knowledge in a municipality, um, I don't need to introduce, I'm Wes Johnson, I work for Horox Engineers. I've been employed at Horox Engineers for thirty-plus years. I've been the town engineer, uh, ten or so years. So we looked at it and said, what Charleston needs is a revenue source, a commercial. It's a pretty well-known fact that for every dollar the city collects, a town municipality from Salt Lake to Logan, they collect about eighty to eighty-five cents of the dollar the town spends. Every commercial business collects about a dollar thirty for the dollar that the town needs to spend. So if you're in a community that does not have a commercial revenue, to be able to, um, work on your roads, to, to rebuild, fix your parks, you need to raise your taxes way up. Well, we looked at it and said, that's not a good option. So we looked at, what do we do to get a commercial base? We looked at it and said, well, right now, we've got warehouses. Um, they looked at a gas station and said, what kind of a gas station can we get on a septic tank? Came back, you can get a, a one pump gas station. Well, no gas station is going to come to town if you say you can have one gas pump out front. So we looked at it and said, what, what can we do? How can we get a sewer system that meets the commercial needs but doesn't burden the community? So we looked at, and probably for about two years, been talking to Heber City, saying, Heber City, if we were to install a sewer line that would serve the commercial needs, could we connect to your sewer line? Saying, it, it's just cost prohibitive to say Charleston's gonna run a line clear of the Heber Valley Sewer Plant. I, it's not a finalized signed document yet, but I believe Heber City will say, yes, Charleston, you can hook to our sewer line. So we're looking at a system saying, can we put a sewer line down one eighty-nine and possibly down three thousand south to possibly serve the school and build a commercial base on one eighty-nine? Who would pay for that sewer?
We would.
The developer would.
Yeah.
Right.
So are you just gonna pay for three thousand south?
No, that would be.
Okay, so the developer.
Please do not interrupt, ask your question.
Is willing to say, yes, so I can sell a restaurant, uh, I, so I can sell a commercial base. The developer is committed, he will install a sewer line down one eighty-nine to three thousand south. Does the school hook on? Well, that depends if the school comes up with the money to do it or not. The town is not going to pay a dime to get this sewer line run down one eighty-nine and they won't pay a dime if it goes down to the school. I can commit that to you. Now, right here, we've looked at and said, what type of sewer would we put in? Well, this is a typical, traditional Heber Midways type sewer system. There's manholes, um, every four hundred feet, there's an eight-inch line that the home connects to. It flows down the line to a, a fairly substantial maintenance-high pump station that then pumps it up to Heber. That's a, that's quite a cost, um, expensive project to install. We've looked at it and said, let's install a low-pressure system, which is, the, the manufacturer is a heat-one system. Now, each home has their own pump, their own lines. This home will pump up, this home pumps up. The only line the make, the only si- line the city owns is this line out in the road and the maintenance on that line is about once a year, manufacturer's saying once every four years. I'm saying it's a minimal cost. Why wouldn't you do it once a year? Have a, a high-pressure water truck come and hook to that line and blow it out once a year. Um, I look at this and say, is this a requirement for Charleston? No. Is this an opportunity for Charleston? Yes. Will any homes be required to connect to that line? No. Will that line be ran down throughout Charleston and hook up the town of Charleston? No. If that, if there's a, a development that came in and said, I want to hook to that sewer, the town would say, there it is, bring your line up and hook to it at your expense. Who pays for the maintenance of this line? The commercial units and the people that say, I want to be hooked to that sewer. If you say I don't, you don't need to. If you say I do, you will have the opportunity to hook to it with a monthly bill. But that monthly bill will be simply because you're saying, can I please hook to that sewer line? Um, there's a whole bunch more I can say, but maybe pause for a minute for questions or?
It's fine. Well, no, let's not pause for questions, let's let them ask their questions when they have their three minutes.
Okay, Brian, you have more to add to this?
Hi, I'm Brian Grease, I, I used to be a resident of the town.
Wes.
I have worked, I guess, for the town in a part-time capacity since two thousand.
Sure, I know that. This is gonna be every five years.
Wes did a really good job explaining the history of this. Um, in some ways, the commercial area, um, was a little premature, uh, because there was not, you know, we're, we're struggling a little bit with fire flow in that area. We're working with the county fire marshal and county fire chief on those. Um, trying to figure out how they bring, and, and as well as, as other meetings to, uh, to get fire flow to the area. Um, Wes is exactly right, that's how most, most, as far as bringing, uh, utilities to an area, that's how most cities do it, is they require the developer to do that. They have to build the roads, put in the sewer and water. Um, on occasion, if they, you know, if the city wants to, wants to, they can bond for it. Sometimes they do impact fees, different ways to, to bring cities. So it doesn't have to be done by the developer, but if the city chooses to, they, they can make the developer front the cost, the developer. Then what they will do is have a, we call it pioneering agreement or a rate commerce agreement, there's different names for them. He can say, if you want to hook onto my line, you gotta pay me so much because I was the one in front of the cost, not the town. Um, and so that keeps the cost of, of construction in the, uh, you know, in the developer's realm and then also gives them some incentive to do it. Um, the, I, I don't know that anybody anticipated the types of businesses that are going into the current area. We've got a couple of food processing businesses that are overwhelming the septic tanks that were put in there. Believe they have to be pumped out once a month. Um, so that's part of the reason that, um, that, that they want to bring, uh, as they said, there, some, a commercial, uh, uh, I can't see stores, uh, convenience stores. Um, I've, I've looked at this, kind of a, a lot on the north side that's already in town. And there's also other areas north of there that are, are looking to annex, uh, into the town. Um, it would be, in my opinion, you know, if, if that's the town's desire to bring those areas in and create this commercial base, it would be irresponsible to do it without some kind of sewer and water, you know, fire flow and that kind of thing. Um, kind of the bottom line is, that area will, and we'll talk about this a little bit more at the, uh, after this, there's a, a discussion on the annexation, but if you've seen, the whole world's exploding right now and likely that area will develop whether Charleston annexes it or not. Um, if it's annexed into Heber City, then likely they will put some, I'm just guessing, because I've watched this happen from all over here. Cities like to dump what they don't want and sit in town right on their edges. And so you might see, you can put a lot of high-end city apartments or different things right there, um, right on your border and you don't have. So, you know, one reason to, to go through with this is to, to have some control, um, of, of what happens there. Now, if you really look at the basics of why a city exists, it's to plan their own destiny. I mean, it, it's very, it's very easy for, for a, a city to contract with most services. Um, you know, in a city, some cities do, they just say, they dissolve, they say, we'll just have the county plant our roads and we'll have, you know, they'll, you know, we already have county police services, but a lot of times, you know, that, if you really look at the whole thing, what cities provide is, is, is a chance to control your own destiny. And you can't really do that, um, if you're, you know, if you're in an unincorporated area. And I was, I, I was at the, the meeting, the very first meeting in Kelly Jarvis's house when the idea for incorporating, um, Daniel was started. I was asked as a consultant to come and talk, and that's when I worked for Heber City. And that was the main reason, correct me if I'm wrong, is to control their own destiny, so, um, you know, it's, if you want to control it, you either need to own it or, or, or in our case, we need to, uh, be able to have, have it in our city so we can have jurisdiction over it and say what's going on. Um, you know, likely, there'll be, there'll be some housing in there, there's no way you're gonna fill a hundred acres of, uh, with commercial. But we'll talk about more about that when we get to that, Wes.
Um, Brian brought back a memory, about a couple of years ago when we started talking with this council, and I'd be curious, without you raising your hands, think in your mind, that hundred acres north of three thousand south, twenty years from now, will that be developed? My mind says absolutely it will. One of the biggest obstacles that bored and I had in getting over with Heber, when Heber, when we were talking to Heber, saying, can we connect to your sewer system? One of the major obstacles that they asked was, why don't we just go annex? If you're wanting us to provide sewer, why don't we just annex and why don't we control it? And we said to them, sometimes being the big brother comes with an obligation to help the smaller brother. Heber, look at the commercial base you've got, look at the revenue you're getting, from the way scales to Jordan L, is that not enough? And, and Heber kind of said, you know, you're right, we need to, to look out for the valley, not just Heber. So, um, Brian's absolutely correct. It's my opinion, if Charleston said, we want nothing to do with it, you'll see a sewer down one eighty-nine within a couple of years and it will be in Heber City. And Charleston will have no say in what goes in. So your choice, in my opinion, is, do we bring a sewer? Do we have control? Do we get businesses that will bring a commercial base to Charleston? Do we control what the landscaping, what the setback off the highway, what the road configuration? Do we control the density or do we say no? We don't want sewer in Charleston, Heber, you go ahead and take it. Um, there's an agreement that we'll be signing with Heber if we move forward with this, that we will be, each connection will be paying a, a fee to, to Heber City. Now, again, in my example, if you say, I don't want to connect, no fee, your life changes? No, you stay on your septic tank. If you say, yes, I want to connect, you'll be responsible to pay that fee to Heber City and you'll have a monthly sewer bill. I say we, we will have some maintenance on this. Now, if, if, there will be. Um, then it's our job as the town to monitor and say, what's the sewer bill for each home's going to be? How do we make sure each home, that connects by their choice? What's their monthly bill? We'll need to analyze and look at that. So really, the town is not looking at this saying, you, you, you and you have to connect to the sewer. The town's basically saying, along one eighty-nine and possibly down three thousand south, should we be installing this low-pressure sewer system? That's really what the, the option is tonight. Now, uh, those that say, well, that's just letting the camel's nose in the tent, you're right. Could it be twenty, thirty years from now, this gets expanded into Charleston? It's possible. That, that is a possibility, but it's kind of your choice who you put up here to make those rules. This agreement with Heber where we say, how much is the connection fee? That agreement gets reviewed, um, every five years to see, is Charleston collecting enough on our bill? Is Heber collecting enough? That's a, a five-year review that we, we, our goal is to stay on top of this and make sure we're going about it responsibly. Again, I, as I started, I look at this as an opportunity, not a requirement.
And along those same lines, I'm sure a lot of you are wondering, you know, exactly, are we gonna be forced by some outside entity to, to go on it? And that's, that's a possibility whether this happens or not. And that's a possibility, whether this happens or not. And in this whole process, we've talked with the county health department. They still told us, they have no desire to force the town onto sewer. But they've said, "But we have no control over what the state would do, the state division of drinking water quality or federal EPA." They don't, you know, they can't control what would happen there. I understand, you know, it's why the county just went from, you know, we were on a five-acre for a traditional septic system for a lot of years. Then they started allowing these alternative systems. They went down to an acre. They said, "It's not just Charleston, it's anywhere that there is septic systems." It just keeps coming in and out, but anywhere there's septic systems, you know, the sewers, it's, when we talk to them, we always think of the girl stuff. But that's not really what everybody's worried about. You know, the little bacteria, for them traveling an inch is like one of us walking 1,000 miles. They die off pretty quick from the thing, what the, you know, as long as the water's traveling slow enough, sometimes Charleston can get water too fast. But really, what the issue is, nitrogen, nitrates, nitrates, different things that get down in the water from phosphates from your laundry detergent stuff, that gets down into the groundwater and it gets over into Deer Creek. And they're saying, you know, that those nitrates, nitrates are rising in that area. I don't know if it's true or not, but some of the algae blooms that have happened, there's been rumors that that's part of the problem. So they've gone to, they did a water quality study and found out that if we went to two acres per septic tank, then that should allow these systems to function in a good range and be safe. You know, the school, my understanding is, the school put in somewhere around a quarter of a million-dollar septic system, and it's not working very well. And whose fault is that? I don't know. You know, I don't believe it's the schools, but whoever they hired, whatever, but it's, the fact is, it's not working. County Health Department is very concerned about what's happening at the school. The school, because it's a state-chartered school, I don't want to understand exactly how this school works, but it's not a private school. It's a private school, the town could have said yes or no, whether it could come in, you know, meet the zoning ordinance, all that. Well, you've got a state-chartered school, state's way up here, we're down here, as far as who gets to say what. And the state says, "We could put schools anywhere we want." Really, the only thing we could control was their access to our road. You know, it's possible, it's like, the town didn't do it. The state, I don't imagine, could force the town to put in a sewer line to the school, but they could still allow, you know, push a sewer line from the school all the way down to Heber line, and then likely Heber City would own the line in our city. And then you'd still have the same issues of, you know, somebody wants to develop their property and hook up to it, different things. I mean, we still have one-acre zoning in the town. As long as we're in septic tanks, it in effect makes us a two-acre zoning. The, excuse me, the larger acreage sounds really good, but there's communities like Linden and Bluffdale, the developers sued and won. They said, "Everybody," you know, there's a thing called inclusionary, I'm sorry, exclusionary zoning, which means we're zoning to keep people, those people out of our town. And it's, you know, these cases have gone all the way to the Supreme Court, but in other communities. But anyway, the judge told Linden and Bluffdale both that they had to allow apartments and different things. And it was all because they were on, you know, I think they were about a two-and-a-half-acre zone. I think we're fairly safe with the one acre. The bigger that gets, the more nervous it makes me. But anyway, the judge looked at the developer, and he's the same guy that's developing the vineyard, and he said, "Well, I'm not a planner, but since you're the one that filed the lawsuit, you get to put it on there wherever you want." So that area by Bangor and Redwood Road is all apartments. And it was two-and-a-half acre zoning. So there's some things that can be out of our control. You know, if you follow the legislature, most of the legislature are very heavily involved in the real estate world. There has been a tax on cities every year for the last four or five years to take away zoning power. They have threatened, in fact, there was a bill this year that was going to do just that, and I believe it passed, and the governor vetoed it. But they've said, you know, "We put in these major highways, and we want, you know, we all know there's a housing crisis, and the way to solve all this and not cause transportation problems is to put high-density housing along all the major corridors." And since cities won't allow it, and, you know, I don't know of an area where somebody that ran for office, pro-high-density development, could win anywhere in Utah. And in fact, I know, I can give you an example after example of people that have lost their elections because of that. And yet, that's what the legislature's saying, "Well, if the cities aren't brave enough to do it, then we'll take that authority away." They give us our ability to do whatever, you know, they are keen and we do whatever they say that we can do. And that just keeps getting, every year, it's more and more traction. You know, it's mostly along the Wasatch Front, but there has been some rumors about the Wasatch Bag. So there's a lot of things at play here that, you know, I'm glad I'm not in their seat. They have to make the hard decisions. I'm just here to advise, and so is Wes. But anyway, it's a complicated thing, and I look forward to hearing your questions and your answers.
Let me just end with, I've been meeting with the board for two years, and I can guarantee the board's got a tough decision. Your interest is what this board is working for, and they've worked very hard. This has been a tough discussion, but I admire the length they've gone through. I admire the input, and thank you, Pablo, for coming out. Maybe just wrapping up my part on the lines of questions, I hope you understand now, why is the town looking at a possible sewer? It's to get a commercial revenue. It's because we feel, I feel, 20 years from now, that is going to be developed. Do you want to have a say in what it looks like? Do you want that to be the warehouse alley of the belt? If sewer comes in, are you going to have to connect to it? No. In fact, isn't probably will be available to you. If you don't live on 3,000 south or along 189, the sewer, you connecting to the sewer isn't an option until you say, "Okay, we'll pay to bring it down to us." I think that's the gist of what I've got.
Yeah, I don't think I have anything else to say, so thanks, Wes.
We ask that there be nothing else from the people unless they are at the mic. So if you're at the mic, you have your full three minutes to take care of what you want to say. Please don't interrupt them. If you have something to say, you have the right to come to the mic. Remember, one time only. I want to say that we, as a board, did not have to have this open meeting. We could go ahead and vote without it. We have, over the last three years, this is on the agenda many times, as there was not a lot of discussion from the people of the town until now. We are trying to do the best we can. We have lost many nights' sleep over this. None of us has an easy job. So please remember that we have done research on this for over two years. We are trying to work out details so that you, as citizens, now do not have to spend one dime on that sewer line. I want to make it clear to you that we never be required to put the sewer to your home as long as I am mayor and I have a good counsel, to be open-minded, as I have with this one. Remember, this is a discussion of the full board and not just myself. This is a decision of the whole board and not myself. Okay? Well, we'll open it up to comments. Please.
I think we're finding that if they aim at that...
Please come forward and state your name, your address, and your questions. Here.
That mic has been breathed in by an unmasked person.
Okay, then, speak loud.
I'll speak loud. Okay, Lady Kabonic, 2864,000, 3,000. I'm talking to my French neighbor, a lot of my uncle. So I want to start off with, I think it makes a clear analogy, this winter to the road. And most of us know, some of us don't know, but let me just clarify that the engineer here was trying to create the feeling that all roads need to be replaced. Well, what is it, 1.3 miles and it costs 1.2 million? That's because it was faulty construction. There was no base put down on that road. Right? Have we got a contractor in here? Okay, it was faulty construction from day one. And also, there was no bond. We did not get to vote on that road, that 1.2 million dollar, the council, board did. Okay? So there's the analogy from winter to the road to the sewer. And I think we all know the end date here. The problem with the commercial is there was no sewer permit before the building permit. Every place I've ever lived, you have to have a septic permit before you can build. What happened? So it's a typical developer... I shouldn't say it. I shouldn't say it. But I will, I'll say, I'll say 90, 90 pounds. Okay? That's as far as I'll go. So, we don't know what we're going to do. First of all, the treatment plant over Legacy Bridge is over capacity right now. So they're going to pump it uphill. We never heard anything about the pumping. That's a fortune. Can you imagine pumping? Poop doesn't run uphill except in Charleston, Utah, is what they're trying to force down your throat. So they're saying, "Oh, well, we'll run it down to the commercial. We'll let the developer, Len Nelson, pay for it. He's the one that's making all the money, and he wants us to pay for it. Oh, well, we'll go down 3,000 west out to the school. We're not getting a nickel."
Mr. Kabonic, your three minutes is up. Thank you.
We're not getting a nickel from the school.
Next.
This board is not qualified. We need federal money. We need federal money.
Mike, your time's up.
Is that three minutes?
My name is Lynn Casper. I've lived down here most of the years. Valley means a lot to me. I listened to what they said and what he's presented, and I think that he's coming across with something that we really need to look into, but I do have a few questions. I want to know for sure that this is not going to financially impact your citizens. There's a lot of them that live here that cannot afford it, okay? I want to know if it's going to change coming up 3,000 south? Is there going to be a lot more homes allowed to be built on that property? I get nervous going to talk to, you know? And so, you've got acres now, is it going to drop to lots? Is it going to come down past the school to that and open up that building there? We want to know what this impact is going to be on our community. Are we going to have a lot more homes? The roads and things, they need to be thought of. We have a lot of bed and breakfasts. They're in this community. Are they paying anything in? Because they've got, bringing in a lot of people that are running up and down our roads right now. They're using our parks. Is there any amount coming from the bed and breakfasts to support our community? These are the things I'd like to know. Thank you.
Okay. Lynn, you're going to have to remind me, honey, that your first question was...
Financial.
Financial. Oh, the city will not be responsible. I can't guarantee that, okay? But I can't guarantee that if you walk out here and walk across the street, you're not going to get hit by a car either, okay? But I can be about 97% sure that the community itself, unless it decides to hook onto the sewer, will have any impact on that at all. We understand, as a board, that there's many elderly people here that's on fixed incomes. We understand that. We know that. A lot of us are on fixed incomes. We know the hardship it takes to put an extra $20 a month away for something. We know that.
We already had our taxes go up double in one year.
No.
I'm 104%.
No, it did not go up 104%. Well, it might have done, but not the, not the city tax did not go up that much because we had a problem with that.
It would have 104%.
So, anyway, hopefully, hopefully, the commercial base from, from the commercial area will pay for the sewer. Okay, coming down 3,000 south to the school. If, if the developer below the school or anywhere along that wants to bring that to their property, that is up to them. There's still one acre, lots. Still one acre. That's, that's what it is. And until the board changes that, which I don't see in the near future, the town of Charleston will stay, the, the old town of Charleston will stay where it's at. Our idea is to bring sewer down to the commercial property. If we have any growth, we have it out that way. Okay, one more you have.
The bed and breakfasts that are...
The bed and breakfasts, my understanding is that they are taxed. Now, I haven't seen, have we seen any taxes off of the bed and breakfasts, Karen?
They come in as a sales tax.
Okay, so they come in as a sales tax.
They pay it to the county, and then the county disperses it.
Okay, so it goes to the county, the county disperses it to us.
State.
Okay?
Sales tax was the state.
State, and then it comes to state.
Okay. Okay, so do you understand that? Is that all your questions?
I think so.
Okay, we'll take the next three-minute one.
I actually just have a quick one just off of her. My name is Andy. It's fine, I'm fully vaccinated.
I am too.
We all are. We're all, but we're vaccinated. Just to build off of hers, I'm not sure if this is working. Oh, pardon me, my name's Andy Mercury. I live over with Travis Meekum on his wife. I just didn't change my name. It's on, it's not working. Anywho...
You better pull your mask. Thank you.
Yeah, just don't breathe on the mic.
That's fine. So, anyway, just to build off, just to build off of her questions, we kind of want to know, like, where can we find the information specifically on, like, the developer's plan and the cost and what he's planning on doing and et cetera, et cetera? I wasn't able to find it. Also, you know, just, I can't find a town plan. I know that Heber does. They're a lot larger than we are, so there's probably something that they've thought beforehand. But, you know, we all have these, well, we're expecting this. This is what we're expecting, this is what the board is thinking. But it was like you were saying, like, where can we find this plan? There's no master plan available, at least online, which is where things should be, because, I mean, no offense, but nobody is, you know, stuck in their community anymore. Everybody works outside of town.
We do have a general plan. It is available to anybody, and I think it is online, isn't it?
The general plan covers...
The commercial property.
The commercial properties and what people are allowed to have on their properties, lighting, that sort of thing, but there's no master building plan.
You're right, there's not.
What do we want? What is Charleston's future?
Go ahead, Brian.
What you're referring to is actually the zoning ordinance. That's what tells you you can do, what your setbacks are. There is a general plan that the whole community got together and worked on a few years ago.
2012 was the last one I was able to find, so.
It was reviewed.
It was, it was reviewed this last year by a committee, and they came up with no changes.
Okay. It cost you 75 bucks to get a copy of it. No wonder why I can't find the video.
They don't want us to know.
Turn that off and we'll start over. Okay, next person, three minutes.
I just wanna say something real quick. So I'll hold the mic, even though I don't like this mic. I own an audiovisual company, and I'm ethically opposed to using this mic.
Well, that's, okay.
I just wanted to say, there's twenty-five people watching online, and if you stand right here, this mic will pick you guys up the best. And I know this is some really important shit, so we want everybody to hear it online as well. I don't know enough about the sewer to have an opinion personally. I don't wanna hook up, but that's my two cents.
Margot, she's next, honey.
I don't, I'm, excuse me, I'm not gonna take three minutes.
Here, hon.
I'm not afraid of a mic, 'cause I'm a preposterous actor.
Um, my name's Kay Sheehan. I live at two-six-zero-one south, three thousand west. And I've been in Charleston for not nearly as long as most of you, but for twenty-six years now. I love it here. I love this town. I love everything about it. I love all of you and even the ones I don't know. Um, I have a crazy little dog. She runs up and down and barks at all of you when you go past my house.
And we try not to get her in cars.
Thank you. She will not run across the electric fence, so you don't have to worry about that. Um, I was on the planning commission years ago when we talked about all of this. And we've been talking about it for a long time. And my concern is that I want Charleston to have a say in what Charleston is. I absolutely believe, and I, I have not been a proponent of sewer, and I will not hook up to a sewer unless I'm forced to. But I absolutely believe that if we, as citizens of Charleston, do not take the advice of these people who've been looking into it, and I remember twenty years ago when we were looking into it, and do not take their advice, we will not have any say in what happens. It is far better that we get the tax from the commercial development than that Heber City does. It is far better that we get a say in what happens in our town than that Heber City puts condominiums and apartments next door to our houses, and we have no say. So while I have not been a sewer proponent, I am a proponent of this town and these citizens and us saying what happens in our town. That's all I have to say.
Well, I was kind of going to say the opposite in a way, because when somebody mentioned that, you know, the goal is that we have control over our town and what, what it becomes. My name's Margot Howke, and I live at thirty-two forty-one south, thirty-six hundred west. We did have a say when we voted for the sewer or not, having the sewer back in two thousand, around that time. And our community stayed the same because of it. And I, you know, opening a can of worms is very scary to me. And I'm afraid of, of potential things that can happen because people make mistakes and not make a road correct. Or they, they don't make the, you know, they shoot the gun at, you know, with the industrial thing up at the top of the road, and the people that bought that place knew that they had to have sewer, so why do they need, you know, I mean, septic, why do they need sewer when the agreement was, when they bought the property and made their commercial thing? You know, it's, you know, they want sewer now. And I think it's just, those kind of things are just gonna keep weaseling and weaseling on. And I think we just have to not make the same mistakes that we've made before. And that we require trails that go through everywhere, from anybody who does anything to this area.
Uh, my name is Jeremy Taylor. I live over on, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-four Lance Circle. What I, what I really wanted to point out, I've lived here in Charleston for about nine years. And I, I've came to city council. I actually ran for one of the, the seats on the board a few years ago. And I, I've, I've had a lot of interest in, in government here. I, I think that Charleston is right on the edge of, of turning into something different. I, I don't think we really have much of a, much of a, a way of stopping that. But, uh, what I wanted to point out is, is with the, the previous city council and some existing members of this city council, I've, I've watched the, the city council pass different, uh, things, really picking on the small businesses of this town. I've seen them focus on several, uh, of the, the individuals in this town that, that were doing auto repair in their yard with, with revenue, or I've seen, seen people, uh, seen, seen people picked on. And they've really passed some things just in the last few years inhibiting small businesses, like home-owned businesses, to flourish in this town. And they, they say that they need tax revenue. They say that they need, they need this revenue to, to come in and pay for our roads and pay for our updates, and I agree. We, we as citizens don't want higher taxes. That's why probably every one of us is here today, is because of our concern about money going out of our pocket. So I, I would really like to know why the council has determined that they don't want small businesses or encourage small businesses in the residents, uh, for example, daycare or auto repair, or I'll, I'll throw my little brother under the bus, an AV business. The one that's filming tonight is my little brother. And he actually chose, because the town was picking on him, he chose to purchase another piece of property in Salt Lake Valley to run his business out of, and he has thus moved all of his stuff out of here, yet he still has interest in Charleston also. Just to use him as a, as a direct example. But I, I feel like if we were to encourage small business development, not only in the area that they're, they're directing, but also in, in the other areas, there, there's a lot of revenue that we're just passing by because we're discouraging people to do those small internet-style-based businesses. There's a lot of tax revenue that we're missing out on. Um, and, and I just, I just also would really like to know if, worst-case scenario, let's say everything goes south, how much would this cost us? You know, how much would this sewer going down there cost us? I, I would like worst-case scenario, and I have not seen that. I've been to several, uh, board meetings just in the last few months, and I have never heard that, that number thrown out there. Um, and, and the other thing is, is what, what's the state, uh, requirement? I, my understanding is within, within a hundred and fifty feet of a sewer, you are required by law to hook into it. And who's to say that there isn't another big developer that comes in and, and picks up that, that piece of, of, that, that field behind Pope's Farms, you know? The, the jam place or somewhere else, and they, they drop the coin to run that, that line down to, to where they wanna put a big development. That's gonna require everybody else to hook into that line by, what I understand is the hundred and fifty-foot rule, that you have to hook into sewer. Um, I had a brother-in-law that tried to go, go back to septic because the town he lives in raised their, their sewer rates so high. They told him he couldn't go back on, on the septic after he'd converted over. So there's, there's just a lot of things that, that I would like answers to, especially with the small businesses. Why are we not encouraging those small businesses not in the direct line? I mean, let's admit it. The, the brick-and-mortar businesses of yesterday are yesterday. They're not happening. We're gonna see more and more internet-style-based businesses, and those do not cause a big footprint here. So that's, that's just the questions I had.
Last, will you answer this one?
Except the small business part, I, I'm an engineer. What will it cost the town if this goes belly up? Nothing. The arrangement is with the developer, we've got an agreement, let's say that the agreement with Heber goes forward. We will say to that developer, we have permission for you to hook onto this manhole in Heber City, and we will allow you to bring that sewer down here to Charleston. If he goes broke halfway through, town's not out of dying. If the school says we want the sewer line down three thousand south to our school, and they get half, they get halfway there, and they run out of money, the school's not, or the city's not out of dying. School doesn't hook to the sewer. I can assure you, our plan as it sets today does not cost the city a dime. If it goes belly up, we don't get a sewer, we're not out of dying. That's bringing up the question. If you, if it's running for five years and goes belly up, who takes care of it after it's in and functioning? Okay, let me, a gentleman asked. That's the question. Okay, let me see if I can answer that. A gentleman asked, um, how does the sewer run uphill? Each resident, each commercial unit that hooks on has their own personal pump. They each have a holding tank. Depending on, if it's an, an average home, that holding tank is about a hundred and fifty gallons. It operates just like your toilet bowl does. It's got a float in it. When the float's down, the pump is off. As that float reaches a certain level, the pump kicks on and pumps till it's down. So let's say it's halfway through, let's say it's five years from now. If this, if this commercial unit says, I don't wanna do it anymore, they quit. There's really nothing that can go out other than this main line that we do the maintenance on each year and clean. The mayor and I met with the distributor, the, the person we met with distributes an E-one, is the type of low-pressure system. We asked him, is this a new system? No, there's approximately two thousand of these systems in the Jordanell Basin. There's approximately four thousand of these systems in the Snyderville Basin. So this is not a new system. I, worst-case scenario. Worst-case scenario is this line breaks. That's the, that's the only obligation the town has, is this main line. If it's installed properly, and we'll oversee how it's installed, developer pays, the developer pays us to inspect and make sure it goes in right. We asked the gentleman, what's the life of this line? He said, I don't know. We've had them in for seventy years, and that they predict a hundred-year life. I know they're, they're a seventy-year life. That's as long as we've been doing it. So there really is nothing as a maintenance-free system. I get it. I understand. But that's the question. What is the maintenance cost if every single south? You don't know. But the town is responsible for that. The only maintenance the town has is annually flushing that line. You're wrong.
No, we're not.
If something happens to that line and it doesn't function, who's got to clean it up?
That will come in with the, with the bill that goes out to the people.
The town will not the bill.
But it will be in a fund that is paid by the sewer bill.
So you say, the town will be saddled with the maintenance of this line if it goes down in five years or whatever the number is? You know, you're correct. You know it is. You're, you're correct. Absolutely. But I say the best way to predict the future is look at the past. If they've got two thousand of these systems in Jordanell that are maintenance-free, and four thousand in Snyderville, that the Snyderville Basin Water Reclamation Plan gives a high recommendation, says we love the E-one system. Jordanell Special Service District says we love this system. Midway City has approximately two hundred homes with this system that I know of no maintenance. I'm the Midway City engineer also. They are still operating. What if that business part goes down? It's not operational. You've got to maintain the line. If the business part goes down, the commercial unit can't hook on. When, if this pump goes bad, and it will, they have a ten-year, ten-to-fifteen-year life. You got it. The business is responsible to replace the pump. If there's no business there, who replaces it? If there's no business there, you don't need the pump. Uh, you can't leave an open line. You're, alls I'm saying, if you're saddling us with the maintenance of this line, should everything go to funk up there? I'm assure, like the mayor said, there's no guarantee in life. But I can assure you, the, the approach we're taking, if you live in Charleston, and most of you will never have the opportunity, let alone the requirement, if you don't hook to the line, you have no obligation. Let me address the gentleman that said a hundred and fifty feet. The actual number's three hundred feet. The state code says if you're within three hundred feet of the line, you're required to connect on, unless the local jurisdiction has a different zone, different ordinance. Midway City, we have a zone and ordinance that says if you're within three hundred feet of the public sewer, you connect onto it unless you've got a functioning, operating septic tank. If you have a functioning, operating septic tank, you do not have to connect onto the line.
And I, maybe I can help you with that. I don't know, is this working? Is that working now? Maybe I can help you with that. Part of, part of the theory is, is that every month, when they pay their monthly fee to be connected to that line, part of that is gonna go into a slush fund to the city, so they will have a, a fund already there. So if something does go wrong with the line, that, that fund can, can service the line. Does that help you?
It is a good theory, but I think it needs more study on this.
Okay, well, no, we appreciate, no, we appreciate your information. We just wanted to give you back where we're at with it.
This is a double-edged sword. Yes, we need it. We do need it.
Okay, if you want to speak for three minutes, you can come up. Otherwise, I ask that the audience do not participate.
I've had my three minutes. Your turn, my turn.
My name's Jim Howells. I've been here for a while. My, I guess my question is, I don't wanna be saddled with someone else's sewer line that for whatever reason, in five years, seven years, it's, it's functioning, does well. The business part goes down, whatever reason. We, we've had the pandemic, we know that. And I think there's other things to come, but who knows? My crystal ball's broke. But, uh, alls I'm saying is, once this system goes in, what is the ramification? I want a number. Does it cost us a thousand dollars a year to maintain it? Does it cost us fifty, uh, fifty thousand to maintain it per year? I want a number. You guys can't give me that. I think you're very not prepared.
I can certainly give it to you.
Very good. Thank you. Go ahead.
And, and I can give you what I know.
Okay.
That is to clean out that line once a year will probably cost you between two, will cost the people in the sewer area between two and five hundred dollars.
What's your source?
What's the name of the company?
Me? Twin D. Midway City, again, I, I'm sorry, thank you. Um, I'm the city engineer for Midway also. I'm an employee of Borox Engineering. Um, Midway City, we clean, they have, excuse me, Jim. They have the gravity system. We clean that system, one-fifth of the system every year. We have Twin D, a professional company that comes and videos the interior of the line, flushes it. We have Twin D, a, a professional company that comes and videos the interior of the line, flushes it out. They will come and hook on to this quick connection while they're in Midway, and flush that out for probably, now this isn't a guarantee, but what they, they charge in Midway is $400. That would, no, total, $400 for them to come and hook on to the end of this line and flush it out. They, we would have them do it while they're in Midway, come down to Charleston every year. We get a contract. Once a year, you hook on to this main line because the black is owned by the city, the green is owned by each commercial unit that hooks on. That's why we say if the pump in the green building goes out, the green building pays to rebuild, restore the pump. If, if this, if this were, the worst-case scenario is we get a break. Whoever's a contractor in the room, if I install a poly pipe that's probably a four-inch pipe, and you bed it properly, what's the life of that four-inch poly line?
One year? One year, unless it's over capacity. If you put that four-inch pipe to its capacity of one year, it'll fail.
I'd like, I'd like to visit with you more about that. Um, the gentleman we talked to, my experience is, it's got a 50, 100-year life. If it's installed properly, and we'll oversee the installation.
Okay.
Hey, Jim?
I'll finish my couple minutes, go ahead.
This is a small business part, I entered it here and answered.
Oh. Go ahead, Jim, go ahead.
How many minutes I got left?
Oh, uh, uh, couples.
Oh, okay, good deal.
One and a half.
You know.
One and a half.
One and a half, oh, you took half of it. Okay, you know, this is a double-edged sword. I agree, you know? We have to know what we're doing in our town, and we want our town to be able to have control. I get that, okay? But I also get the fact that I don't want to be saddled with someone else's problem if they go to funk, and it's gonna, you know, we've just gone through a, a double-digit, or, you know, a raise in taxes, and we probably will again if something like this happens. I just don't want us to have to, you know? Us little people will probably be shoved out of town if that happens, and I'm sorry. But if, if our taxes go up the way they are, and, and I get inflation and all that, but, um, I don't want to be involved in something that is, you know, you can't afford to live here, gotta go. But, um, I'm not interested in that. But I also agree that we have to have a say, and, and is this sewer the answer? I haven't heard enough on it. I would like some real numbers, and I would like to know what we're saddled with if, in the future, for whatever reason, and I don't know why, don't know how, but if in the future it becomes abandoned, what is our, uh, what, what are we on the hook for? What are we saddled with? How much is it going to cost us to maintain this line that nobody else wants? It's got to be maintained if it's there. It's got to be maintained. You're not just going to shut it off. And that's my question.
$400 a year.
In today's pricing. But I, and I get that. We have, we have inflation, and I get that. But you know what? If, if people are on it, and you get four or five people on it, are you going to put their sewer bill so astronomically to cover the guys that's left? You can't do that. You can't feasibly do that. You can't put five or six people, you can't saddle them with what 20 people's been paying.
Jim, you're done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Howdy, guys. Lynn, something again?
Just a minute, Lynn. Will you hold on just a minute while I finish answering this other question, please? You're not my homeowner, okay? All right. The question of, um, the small businesses, the homeowner businesses in town. I have never known the board to be, uh, to not care about any of them. Uh, I know we care, I know we need the home businesses, I know we do. We have to have regulations. I mean, do you want, do, would you like, would you like to have a, a shop, a shop next to your house that has cars coming in and out all the time, and, and noise all night long, and stuff like that? We have to be careful of what we do. To regulate something like that, we have, we have just done our new ordinances. Um, the planning commission put a lot of time in on them. They've done a very good job for what they had to do. And I, I honestly don't know of any businesses in town that we have not tried to help. Um, I mean, if they're, if they're by the ordinances, by what we do, then we can't tell them no. I don't know where we come up with that we are, uh...
What was the word you was?
Exclusionary exclusion.
I, I know what you're referring to.
Okay.
There's no restriction on home businesses. Anybody that wants to operate a business out of their home, that is allowed in the ordinance. Internet businesses, anything like that. The issue we had was with premises occupations, where the business was outside of the home, which years ago, the building size was 600 square feet, and everything had to be maintained within the building, okay? That was expanded to where there was no restriction on size. And we, the result was, we have a number of businesses that are non-compliant with the ordinance. And we have complaints from neighborhoods, subdivisions, where those kind of operations are going on. So I understand, Jeremy, the right of people to, to do their business, but the people that live next door in residential area, we also have to respect their rights as well.
Thank you. Hold on just a minute.
Vaughn's right, excuse me.
You bet, no worries.
Stand here where I can be in the right spot.
You're going to reach for my mic for two seconds.
That's going to work.
Testing.
Testing, testing.
Okay. So, so just to expand on what Vaughn said, is that, the, i- i- any, if you, if you have a business that's not impacting the neighborhood, you don't even need a business license in, in the town of Charleston. You can just go and do it. If you want a business license, or for some reason you need one for a wholesaler or something, the town will issue one, but you don't have to have a license to operate, um, any, any business in, you know, in your home, as long as it doesn't impact the neighborhood, which is, which is in line with what the state law is. And, but if you, we do allow, um, daycares, we do allow other things. But if you have people coming to your home, there's regulations on how many cars can come back and forth each day. And if you do have certain things where it impacts your neighbors, and it's inside the home, then you can get a business license for that. The, the prohibition was anything outside of the home, so in the gar, the garage, detached garage barn, those things. And, and that was, and like I say, um, I know what happened. You'd have to ask them, you know, the reasoning behind it. But from what I know about it is that there was just numerous complaints about the, the businesses that we had that were operating on, you know, out in the, out in the yards, and, and that's what the council chose to, uh, help.
So Lynn, uh... I forgot. Lenny, help me. Which was, which was?
The zone, is there a zone in place for us with the 300-foot that we don't have to sign up for the septic tank?
Is there a zone in place?
Law.
Law. Is it set up so that we don't have to sign up? Have you got that all written down in, off Google? Wes?
Try the other mic.
Yeah.
Yay!
Wes? Yeah, tell me if I'm wrong, but there is nothing anywhere that says that you have to, you have to, uh, hook on to the sewer?
The board's intent is to bring the sewer line down Southfield, then down 189 to 3,000 south. That's what the developer has said, yes. I will pay for that. Now, like, uh, Brian said, I'm positive he will come to us and ask for, uh, an extension line agreement, a pioneering agreement, whatever. And what that basically is, is saying, I'll pick up a number. I paid $10 a foot to install this. So if you have a business that's in front of this line, and you want to hook on, you have to reimburse him that $10 a foot. That's something we, um, approve. We, we don't want anybody getting rich, but we will allow a developer to get back the cost he paid for that front. Um, as far as, is there a zone that says you don't have to connect? If you're not near the sewer line, that, the only time you would ever have to connect is if the sewer line is in front of your house, and you came in and said, my septic tanks failed, can I hook on to this line?
But I want to know if it's in writing, because I don't want someone to come and say, we're sorry, it wasn't in writing, here, give us the money.
I would assume, that's a board question. I would assume the board, as part of this ordinance, as part of this agreement, would be in writing, here's the alignment of the sewer line. And if you're not within 300 feet of that...
I am just concerned in some day and time when they decide to say, your water down here's going jump, we're going to run this sewer line, and you guys are going to cut.
Well...
I want something in place to protect, or say, or stand there on. We can see what, what's going on down here, that if this, with the water level, and the water does not go down into the ground here like a shed, I watched it, I watched the people collapse, finally make this, so they got a curb test that will work, so people can put their house down.
Lenny?
Like Brian said, the health department has commented, we have no intentions of forcing Charleston to put a sewer in. If, if an entity comes in and says Charleston has to put a sewer in, it will be the EPA. Can I guarantee what the EPA is going to do? Heaven's know.
No. And even if we know that 300-foot, these, they, they would, I mean, it would be overridden by the EPA anyway.
Lenny, I met with, uh, Tracy Richardson, and asking those questions about...
Do you want to answer?
I think Vaughn's got the floor.
Just let him answer.
So I met, I met with Tracy Richardson, and asking these questions about the potential of somebody requiring Charleston to hook on to sewer. He says, I'm fine with septic tanks as long as they're put in correctly. Says there's no intention in the county, or no desire on the county's part to force sewer into Charleston, or into any other unincorporated area in the county that doesn't have it. He said, if the, if the time comes, and we can all potentially see that that might happen someday, if that happens, it will come from the state, which will...
Override anything that we have.
They will receive pressure from the feds, from the EPA, and then if the state receives that kind of pressure, and that feeds down to the county, that would be the point where they might say, everybody's got to be on sewer. That's out of our control. Uh, my view on this, the only purpose that we've had from the beginning to try and get sewer into that areas for commercial development, to try and expand the tax base, okay? Um, my personal opinion, I can't speak for the rest of the board, is I'm in favor of bringing the sewer to the commercial area, period. Uh, I know the school has a problem. They knew the situation they were getting into, and they moved in there. My view is, we bring it to the commercial area, I'm not in favor of bringing it down 3,000 south.
The, mine was kind of a part plant. Has, has there been a study done on the impact of the traffic down that stupid road that's already trashed?
3,000?
3,000, it's just trashed. And the speed of the vehicles that are going down through there, yeah, they get slowed down at the school, but after they're past that school, they're like 90 mile an hour this way, and 90 mile an hour that way. And it's, and it's not even, it's, it's crazy.
We have had officers, we have asked officers to come down and patrol that area. I can't, we don't have, uh, we don't have an officer here in town that we're paying to do that. If we did, it would be a lot easier. We have to rely on the sheriff's department to take care of that. We, we send them our complaints. We have been in touch with them many times to, to come down on that road. I've called them myself personally, and said, there's cars going down there too fast. Can you get a guy down here? You need to remember that this is not in our control either. We wish it was.
The, the way you control speed of traffic is what Summit County does. The speed humps, not bumps, but humps. Sometimes you'll look at other communities for solutions.
Also, you want to remember that you've got snowplows every year that's over.
We get snow up in Summit County.
Okay, um, we should get revenue from the tickets that are written in our city.
Well, and that we have no control over either.
Unless we ask.
We, I, I will ask Monday morning.
If we ask for revenue, they'll start charging us to patrol.
To patrol it.
Well, that, we're paying anyways?
They won't get as much revenue from a ticket as they charges.
Yeah. So, anyway, that was about it, it was the, oh. And we used to have a gas, we used to have a couple of gas stations, one down here on the corner on, that was years and years and years ago, um, down on the corner of, uh, 113. And then we had one up, it was called The Prairie, and it had the best donuts in the world. And I know they had gas pumps there, and so what's the difference?
But they only had one or two gas pumps, they didn't, and they only had one gas pump, which we knew was empty.
But anyways, I was just thinking that...
And, and the rules have changed since then.
Rules have changed. All right.
All right, sir, it's, it's your turn, I'm sorry you had to wait so long.
My name's Cody Maxfield, I'm representing the Maxfields that live on 2400 South. I actually live up in Eber, but it's a family farm down there, and I help operate it. And, um, we were, we're, we were against the sewer before, and we're against it this time as well. A little story my grandpa reminded me of. He's 94, and he reminded me of all the promises that were made when the sewer farm was put in the valley, that no one would pay for their sewer. It would be free. I don't know anybody in Eber that's got free sewer. So there's some promises that were not kept there, uh, and it cost them a lot of money. And then, um, we're just, we would benefit from the sewer, because we have property north of 3,000 that, you know, developer's paradise. But we're trying to keep it a farm, and keep it that way, and we plan on keeping it that way. But I know as soon as that pipe comes down 3,000, it's going to turn into a developer's paradise, and we'll probably end up having to relocate and start farming somewhere else.
I'll ask you a question, on what basis would you make that statement that it's going to become a developer's paradise because of the sewer running down there? You still got one-acre requirements for the building properties.
Eventually, it'll, it'll change, just like it did in Eber. Uh, I don't know if anybody's trussed through the development there by Walmart, you know?
But Cody, you're in the county.
I know.
You're not even in the city.
We're hooked to city water, we've paid all the utilities.
Did Brian say that the developer can fight the zoning requirement?
I mean, it, it'll all change, so, and that's just my, my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor? Let me tell you just a second, Brian, just a very easy one.
Yes.
I have it.
Okay, we're, okay. We need to keep this on track, we need to keep it with sewer only. So if you have any, that, you've got your three minutes, sir.
Okay, well, all due respect, I have more questions, and so I hope you'll be a little lenient with the three minutes, because I'm hoping they'll answer them. Um, so during all your talking, I've been writing some things down, so I didn't forget. But, uh, and yeah, Vaughn, I'm in the county too, so, and this won't, this won't affect me right now. But, you know, things change, as we all know, pretty fast. So, uh, first thing, um, you, you, you talked about the high-pressure... So first thing, you talked about the high-pressure flush back. So I have a commercial building in Pleasant Grove, and I'm assuming that all the lines you mentioned are flowing downhill. How many of these lines actually back flush?
Your Pleasant Grove will be a gravity...
No, 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 I'm talking about the ones you were talking about in Jordanale.
Okay, from the pump, which we've drawn, looks like black on there. The pump can pump uphill or downhill. It's a pump.
I understand that. But the amount of slope that's in this ground is unbelievable. Most people don't realize how much slope is in this ground. So how much pressure is it going to take from the end of three thousand or at the school, if it goes that far or whatever, to pump it all the way back to the sewer plant in Heber? And should there be a malfunction and it blows somewhere, who then is responsible for that? The pumper or the city?
Should I answer that?
Please.
That's a really good question. Let me, let me kind of start by saying, we haven't done a detailed design on this. It just doesn't make sense to do a detailed design and then find out, no, we don't want to do it. So we're waiting to say, will the city, will the town connect to the sewer, we'll do the design. I believe the pressure from, if the line went down three thousand south to one eighty-nine, I believe the pressure there would be about a hundred and thirty-five PSI that that pump would be required to push up.
To push that much water at that height?
Correct.
That far uphill?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, that's just based on elevation, that doesn't take any friction loss, that would all be a detailed part of the design. But I have met with the distributor of the E1 system, saying, I don't want to go to this meeting tonight if this doesn't work. And he's assured me, I sat down, I've showed him just kind of a concept layout of here's where it could possibly be, here's the elevations, here's the length, here's where we'd be pumping to. We did some quick calculations and he assured me, yes, this is a small, relatively flat system compared to what they deal with in the Jordanale and Snyderville.
Except their system flows downhill. This is going to have to flow uphill.
Well, but many, many of their systems are down in the valley, they have to pump up to be able to flow down.
I mean, I'm not an engineer. I've done my share of sewer line work in Newland Pass, though, and I know that this general crap won't flow again, so the amount of pressure to push that...
Now, keep in mind, we're not pumping to the sewer plant. You know where Russ Witt lives?
I do.
We'd be pumping to right there. From there, it's gravity on down to the sewer.
To the midway.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I mean, I'm just raising questions, y'all, so I'm hoping that, you know, that's really all it is, so the second question I had is kind of a comment, I guess, this type of infrastructure looks good now, we're a small community, I don't want to be a part of Heber, that's why I live in Charleston. So, but this kind of development ultimately is going to result in denser population. Commercial's going to turn to apartments, condominiums, to whatever, because we have a sewer line and we can accommodate that. And so, you know, if that's the case, who then pays for those, the additional impact of that? Is it the developer of each one of those projects? Will the system then, excuse me, accommodate that pumping back up? Because how big is this line supposed to be? I missed that, if you said.
I haven't said, because it is one hundred percent dependent on, does the board say three thousand south to the commercial area, period? That line would, I believe, a three, maybe four inch line would accommodate that hundred acres. Does it go down three thousand south to one eighty-nine? That's a different line, that's a different size. So I haven't done the detailed analysis, looking at velocity, pressures, head losses, to be able to accurately answer that today.
Okay. And Heber's already annexed into Southfield Road, correct? So are they then eventually planning on coming further south and annexing additional properties in?
That's the question today.
Kevin?
Yes?
Heber City's annexed into Daniel, that's why Daniel incorporated, they annexed north to Walker Hall, going up the Camus Road. So you tell me, what do you think Heber's goal is?
Well, what's, what's the board's goal? Are we trying to stay a small town or are we looking to join in the Heber? I mean, who knows, right?
Well, I think that's a discussion we're trying to have, and I think in large part we're, we're not even talking about the elephant in the room. The elephant in the room, as I, I'm speaking for myself, is that if Charleston chooses to put their head in the sand, Heber is going to annex that property, there'll never be a future discussion about sewer for Charleston again. We'll stay small and we'll go, what in the hell, our taxes are going insane, and the mayor's going to say, like the rest of us, we have no revenue. Our goal, the very reason for this project that we've worked on for two years, and many of these questions could be answered, frankly, if many of you attend meetings more often, you wouldn't be surprised with some of this, but our goal is to get commercial development on the highway, not in front of your house, not in front of my house, get it out on the highway where we can create some tax revenue to mitigate future tax increases that will happen if we don't do it, okay?
Try some drilling.
Yeah. And us having a hand in what happens out there, we can determine what types of businesses are going on, are coming into our town. We don't have to have a dispensary out there if we have a saying what's going on. We might get that if Heber does, okay? Just as an example, doesn't mean they're doing it. But we've got to have a hand in our future, and if we don't take it, we're going to wake up one morning, we're going to say, geez, I don't like any of that stuff that's going on on the highway out there. And Heber's going to have the revenue, they're going to have the sewer systems, they have to pay maintenance on...
Look at the building that's happened down that road already.
And we're not going to have a saying what's going on. That's, that's where we're at.
Without a doubt, I mean, they're talking about expanding the airport, right? So airport expansion brings commercial...
If you look at Charleston, we don't, we don't really have a lot of places to put commercial. That area between three thousand and twenty-four hundred is potentially all I can see, you know, unless the travel pit went down someday and tried to do something over there, but who knows what that is. So one thing I think you can be assured of, if we don't develop some kind of tax base, your taxes will go up. Because just property taxes on large lots doesn't generate the income, that's the problem in Winterton Farms, because it's such few residents, and you're right, whoever made the comment, the road wasn't installed properly, but that's, that's not our doing. So we're just looking at future things like that, okay? So I think if we don't develop something commercially, and I'd like to see Charleston stay just the way it is, but look around, folks, the train left a long time ago, and we've been insulated from development here in Charleston because of the sewer situation, unlike the rest of the valley, but look what's happening in Charleston now. You're having homes built all over. If you want to build a home in Charleston, you can't do it on less than two acres now because of the sewer requirement from the county Health Department. And what kind of homes are we going to get?
Mansions.
Big ones.
So, I mean, your family, you've got property up there, your children can probably afford to build there because your family can give them some property built.
Yeah, you see how many of our kids are building there, right? I want them.
You know, a lot of the folks that are concerned here, those kind of people aren't going to be able to live in Charleston.
Hey, so I remember the first Heber City meeting we went to and said, are you open to this discussion? What did three of the councilmen say? Why shouldn't we just annex?
Yeah, it wasn't just no, it's like, and we've opened the door for them because we've already had this discussion.
Right.
I, I'm one hundred percent convinced that if we don't do this, that will develop just as quick, if not quicker, and Heber will do it, and it won't be what we want, it'll be apartment houses.
So my only other comment is, you said a four inch line, I can't possibly imagine a four inch line is going to accommodate three thousand south as well as what's going to go in on one eighty-nine.
But Kevin, that, I mean, that's, that's way down the road.
Well, I, I get that.
I mean, if we put the system in, obviously, we've got to get engineers to design a system that will work.
I get that, but I'm telling you, the amount of pressure, I don't believe a hundred and twenty pounds of pressure is going to push out to Russ Witt's house from here. I don't believe it for a minute.
Again, that's a design detail we, I have simply looked at elevations and sat down with the E1 guys, saying, can this happen? Their answer was absolutely.
Well, just for, for those of you that know where I live on twenty-four hundred, just above Cody's dad, just for a reference, my basement floor is leveled with his dad's driveway, about a hundred and fifty feet below me. I'm talking, there's a lot of slope in this ground.
That's why, that's why the Water Conservancy District has a problem getting flout the fire flows because of that issue. I mean, we know that.
You're talking three times further than what we're trying to push culinary.
Scott Keller's drive, or porch is above the roof of my house.
But fortunately, none of us have to be engineers, we hire these guys to figure this out and they make the world go round. They're the ones that figure out how to make it work.
And I, I'm absolutely convinced that there's places where these systems work and they pump crap uphill, probably a lot steeper than what we're talking about.
And it's very possible. I, like I said, I'm not here to argue one way or another, it's not affecting me at this point. I wanted to simply raise some questions, food for thought, before you vote.
Well, we spent two years on this.
Two years, a long time to discuss that.
Believe me, in the two years we've worked on this, we've talked about those questions.
You've only been on the board a year, how up to speed were you when you came in?
Well, I'm up to speed now.
Yeah, I bet. In all honesty, this is the first time I've heard about a sewer down here. I mean, I anticipated it was something, it was going on, this is the first I've heard, so, that's why I wanted to come in.
Yes. The vote will be took tonight.
Did you have any more questions?
No, sir, that's it. But it does sound like, based on the Madam Mayor's comment earlier, it kind of sounds like you've already made up your mind, but you're open to listening to what everyone's already said.
Well, we want, yeah, we want to hear, we're glad you're here.
Because she said, you know, I mean, we didn't even have to do this.
We didn't, we don't.
We appreciate you doing it, at least I do.
That's why we wanted to do it, but the board, the board will make the decision, and the board will, they'll each have a chance to voice the reasoning why, whether they're for it or against it, I don't know till the motion's made.
Mayor?
Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, Brian just reminded me that we can take a vote tonight in favor to go ahead with it, but that doesn't mean we have to do it, we can still bail if we get numbers, we get costs, we get so on so forth, and we say, well, that's not what we thought it was going to be, we're not going to do it. This is a vote on whether we continue to have these discussions and try and make this stuff work with Heber City and Daniel, that's what we're trying to do. That's what the vote's about.
Hi.
Hi, you ready for me?
I'm ready.
All right, my name's Joe Graham, I live on three thousand west. I'm grateful you had this open discussion for everybody. I have one question for you, and it goes back to kind of the master plan that was asked by somebody else. I'm all for Charleston controlling its own destiny and dealing with it and setting things that they want, you know, keeping Heber City out of it, that's great. But how are you as a board going to keep from being strong-armed by the developer, who's got a heck of a lot more money than even the city does?
Said no before, I guess we can say no again.
So that's, that's where the master plan comes in. Do you guys have a master plan presented for the area that you would like to annex?
We will have that, we will have that master plan done. That's why we're not annexing any more property right now. We need to see about the sewer down there, then we will get the master plan.
But it sounds, it sounds like you guys want to put the sewer in now and then develop the master plan later.
Well, if we don't have, if we don't have sewer, we can't have a master plan.
What the board's always talked about, what the board's always talked about is a master plan will cost money. If our choice is not to bring sewer down there, there's no need to do a master plan. If we look at it and say, yes, let's bring sewer down there, absolutely, we need to do a master plan, and when they come in and say, we want to annex, we hand it to them, say, that's what we want it to look like.
Okay, so I've ran multimillion dollar projects for software development, hardware, firmware, and it doesn't work that way. You have to have a high-level design in place, and even if you had to throw a little bit of money at it first, even if you had to throw a hundred thousand dollars at it, you save yourself ten times that amount in the end if you do the investigation first.
And I agree with that, what we're saying is, if the decision tonight is, no, we don't want a sewer, we don't need a master plan. It's not ours to control.
Okay. So what's, what's the process right now? Vote on sewer, yes, no? Development plan, master plan, yes, no? Are those the shoot points, the ejection points?
Tonight's going to be, we'll vote on the sewer.
The sewer, you told me the discussion was going to be solely on the sewer going to the industrial area, period.
That's what, that's the motion that will be made.
And then you came along and started calling all those green things, houses, right off the bat.
Well, houses are...
And I felt like I was betrayed.
Houses are, are...
Let me apologize, the green things are commercial buildings, I, it's not houses we're looking at, it's a commercial building, it's my mistake.
And really, the vote tonight is not on the developer, the annexation, the vote tonight is whether we proceed with the discussion we're having with Heber City or stop.
Do you guys have an estimate from the developer, what they want to put there in place? Or do you have just a basic even? I know that they've talked about a convenience store. A developer's in to make money, they're not here to make Charleston beautiful, they don't care, they're in, they're out, and they made their money, they're out. And so that's where, that's why my question always goes back to, you know, what's the master plan for that area?
There's, there's one lot that's not built on up there, and their desire is to put a gas station there. Other than that, it's all in the county from there on up. So there has been no annexation, and in my view, we don't annex anything until we have answers to these questions.
Yeah, but I do agree with you that we need to control, Charleston as a city needs to control that area instead of Heber, because you're right, Heber's just going to throw big boxes out there with who knows what in them.
Put apartments in there.
Put apartments in there, yeah, just high-density housing.
Nope, guaranteed apartments.
Thank you, I'm interested to see the master plan.
Laura, mine, Laura Merritt, been here five generations, thirty-four hundred west, thirty-one fifty south.
Yeah, you're not that old to be here.
Your family's been here.
Families by generation, excuse me, thank you for correcting me. I love this community and everybody here, so mine is not up for discussion, mine is just, as the mayor said, commercial growth. And we could be hit by a car crossing that street, and I count on my county council to protect me from that. They talked about a failed line, that can happen. I'm all for bringing, I'm emotional, sorry if you guys don't know, revenue in, but the line down three thousand south, that's all residential, that has nothing to do with commercial. It's not going to fit any of you here. I love each one of you, and I hope that we can keep this community the way that we've all always wanted it.
Thank you, Laura.
My name's Trent Davis, I live on Land Circle, and honestly, I kind of feel like we're elaborate on what you said, we're putting the cart before the horse, here, you conduct your engineering first, you decide if this is a viable and feasible and sustainable option for the community before you make any decisions on whether or not this is going to go in. Had we made those type of decisions and had engineering involved on the Winterton Road before it was ever adopted, we'd have said, no, your base is bad, there's this road, we don't want to adopt this. Had we done the engineering first, put a little bit of money towards this engineering, these studies, this, we might not be in that situation. And I understand that was a long time ago.
Those are contractors that don't want to spend that money until they know it's a guaranteed day.
Yep. As Brian stated, I feel like honestly, we're giving away control, especially by bringing the... Yep. As Brian stated, I feel like, honestly, we're giving away control, especially by bringing it down three thousand. What do we want for a community? As, as you stated, we can lose that control. They can take it all the way to the Supreme Court and strip your authority for zoning and what you choose for zoning. So we run that line down three thousand. Our people, are these developers going to come and start buying this property and then taking you to court? We don't know that. Is, is Central Utah Water going to come to us and say, okay, well, you have this line, this sewer line in place now, and we've done this study and we've proven that your septic systems are having an impact on the lake, which is in turn having an impact on their drinking water. We, we're going to require you to hook onto sewer. They're going to take that to the EPA. I mean, Central Utah Water has more money and lawyers. They've got a, a large tax revenue base. And they can come in and they can say, hey, no, we, you're having a direct impact on our drinking water. So we want all of you to connect on with the sewer. And I think all of that needs to be considered when you're talking about the size of lines you're going to put in as well. Because if that does come throughout all of Charleston, we need to have a proper sized line running down the highway. We're going to be doing it twice. And that's why I say the engineering needs to be done. If we don't put in the right size of line the first time, we may end up doing it again. Digging all that line up and going from a four inch, six inch to twelve inch line in order to accommodate all of the residents in Charleston that are forced to hook onto that line because Central Utah Water has determined that we have an impact on their drinking water and they've gone to the EPA.
That's your three minutes, huh?
Could I, could I address that comment?
Daryl, Daryl wants to address.
Just real quick, to address your comments, your name again was?
Trent.
Trent?
Was that?
Trent, I just want to address a couple of things you said. First of all, your point is a hundred percent right. If the feds come in and say Charleston goes on sewer, we don't have anything to say about that. There's nothing we could do about it. Whether that's going to happen or not, who knows, or how long it might take for it to happen. This guy right here in the purple shirt, when Winington Road was built, his firm counseled our mayor and our town council not to accept the engineering that was proposed by Tom Smart's engineer in Salt Lake. It wasn't going to work and it was going to fail. That's why we trust, one of the reasons, Wes, to oversee the engineering projects. He oversaw the new Winington Road. A crappy road was built. Tom chose to do it. Wes advised against it. So all of you know, on the record, that's what happened. And then they deeded it back to the town. Is it, the people that live on Winington Road, they got hit for fourteen thousand dollars for that road. How many of you know of a public road where the people who live on it had to pay part of it?
Didn't have to, Daryl.
They didn't have to.
You didn't have to.
No, I, I get that, but the point is-
That they-
You volunteered to.
We volunteered because we knew.
And everybody here should be grateful for that.
So that's not the norm. The point, the point is, we have engineers, they figure out the math, they do the problems. My brother's an engineer. Wes is sharp. I don't think that we spend twenty thousand dollars on engineering before we even say, do we want to proceed with this project or do we want to call it a day? As a business person myself, I say, yeah, let's move forward. Now is the time to do a master plan. Now is the time to do the engineering, and that's when that stuff takes place. At least to me, based on my thirty-eight years of experience doing this.
You can change your mind later if the master plan turns out to-
We, we can always bag it. We can always bail. If it turns out to where we're not happy with what we're seeing, we're going to say, no. We're done. And then we're going to stand by and of course, watch Heber do what they do.
Does the public get to comment then on that? Find out, you find out that it's going to cost twice as much?
Uh, sir, this gentleman's first, and then you.
But to, but to your point, we have monthly meetings. If you come to the meetings, you'll know what's going on. You'll hear the discussions between Wes, the town board, our assistant Brian here that helps us do our planning. This is all, this isn't the first discussion for us tonight. Come to the meetings and sit down, listen in. Okay? We've, we've got some very good people that we've hired. Pardon?
Can I request that this be on the agenda for these future meetings?
Yep.
They will be.
They have been for two years.
They have been for two years now.
Yeah.
You can, I can show you in a minute where they've been on the agenda, so.
You can always request it be put on the agenda and we can bring it up, yeah, to answer your question.
Or you can do it in public comment. You do it in the public comment.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Yes.
Uh, my name's Terry Shoemaker. Uh, I live just on the street over here, thirty-four hundred west and thirty-one fifteen south. This reminds me of a few school board meetings I was at. Let me talk to you a little bit about what I want to compliment this board around. One, they're having this meeting. They said they didn't have to have this meeting. They have the authority to do so. I know they do. They're doing the right thing by asking you and me how we feel about sewer coming down this road. We have feelings about it. I have feelings about it. You have feelings about it. We should be saying how we feel. That's the right thing. They're doing the right thing. Now, you and I have a responsibility to do the right thing too. We put them in office. We gave them an obligation by, when we put them in office, we gave them power to make decisions. That's what they're trying to do tonight. I have questioned every mayor for the twenty years that I've lived here, one question. And I did this because I was superintendent. I had a pretty good idea of budgets around this county. Like a dang good idea about it. I asked every one of them, do we have sufficient revenue as a town to survive as a town? Every one of them thought we did. This is the only group that has tried to act on that. So as we continue to grow, my friends, we're going to have these kinds of meetings repeatedly, as I saw across this county, all throughout this county, as we were forced to put schools in places like Daniel. Right? We had, how many meetings did we have?
A bunch.
A bunch. Okay? The new high school, whatever, whatever, whatever. If there is not a tax base underneath it to support it, then you and I are going to be doing this. Not from our phones, but from here, over and over and over again. What I hear them trying to say here, we need a tax base to support what we want in this town. Having the sewer come to there, and I've heard at least one council member say, he doesn't want it to come three thousand, down to three thousand south. I'm not sure I want it to come down, but it may, like it's done everywhere else across this county. And if it does, we better be prepared for, through a master plan, through some of the suggestions that have come elsewhere, making sure that we are well prepared for the kinds of changes that are already occurring and will continue to occur in the future. I thank you for what you're trying to do here. I want you to know that.
Thank you. Okay, now it's your turn. Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you, Terry. I agree. Thank you, council, for working on this, thinking about this. You've been working on this longer than I've lived in Charleston. I just moved about a year and a half ago. I live on the corner thirty-six hundred and three thousand south. So I think I might be the only one who's commented who actually lives here. You better believe I'm going to go out tonight and measure if I'm a hundred and fifty or three hundred feet or however far I am from this. So one thing I would like to, I, I agree that came up earlier. I think the council should, should definitely codify the plan, their plan, that you, you do not have to, you do not have to sign up here within three hundred feet. Um, the other thing that I'm seeing is that there's a lot of variations on this plan. Come just to the commercial park. Keep coming down three thousand south. Annex, don't annex. And I don't know what we're voting on tonight. Are we voting on any combination of those?
You know, it'll be in the motion that somebody makes.
Okay, so, so that's up to the, that's up to the council.
You'll know exactly what it is, yeah.
I, I propose, it seems, seems in the last bit of the discussion that we've come to that coming down to the commercial park and then going down three thousand south are two totally different things. So I propose to the council that you only vote on what you really need tonight. And if you don't need to figure out the three thousand south part tonight, that, that you could, that you could do maybe what Vaughn has mentioned. Um, so, so there's that. My other question is, so what, the, the key idea of bringing the sewer to the commercial has been to get revenue. So what I'm not, I just don't understand, there are already businesses there. How much revenue is enabled by bringing the sewer to that location? Is that the edge that we need? Like, right now, the businesses are bringing in eighty thousand dollars, but we need ninety thousand. And if we just have one more business, and to get that one business, we'd sue it. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, what is the, how much revenue in tax dollars is enabled by bringing the sewer down over and above what we already have? Do we have a sense for that?
What's up there has been in, uh, Greenbelt. I don't know what taxes are paid on Greenbelt. Ask one of these landowners. It's very little. So anything that's developed and it comes out of Greenbelt is a major increase to the town in tax revenue from property tax.
I don't know what Greenbelt means. I'm sorry.
I, Greenbelt is twenty dollars a year. That's what I pay for an acre. For Greenbelt status, farm material.
Okay.
So anything that's developed, and in particular, something that has sewer that allows more traffic, more business, more customers, that's the business we want. We don't, we're not looking for businesses on, um, septics. We're looking for businesses on sewer. That's where the sales tax revenue and stuff, hopefully-
Okay, so June Pies isn't bringing in any money?
Well, they're bringing in some.
They are, but by comparison, we think we could do better, if you want to call it that, with businesses that actually have access.
So doing better is different than doing enough. That's, that's why I don't, what we have now is not enough.
It's not enough to mitigate the taxes that we will incur as homeowners here if we don't do something.
Okay, so sewer makes it better?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question on what you were saying there. So you say you only want the sewer to come down one eighty-nine for revenue. But are you the ones that would approve it to come down three thousand or anywhere else eventually, which would impact otherwise?
That, that is correct. But we would have a public meeting on that, just like we're having tonight, to hear what the people say.
Cindy Richardson. I live on twenty-seven fifty-nine south, three thousand west. Um, just a quick question. I always wondered, does the school bring us in any money?
No.
So my question is, if we don't get any revenue, why would we want to even come down there?
Well, it would be them that come down there. It wouldn't be us.
So it really wouldn't advantage us because there's no revenue. That's what I thought I should- Plus, we have all the traffic from them, which wears out our roads, correct?
Which we don't, which we don't want, but we can't help that either.
That's my question. Thank you.
Can I answer something there?
Yes.
So a lot of you guys keep, uh, asking some questions and say, some of you are saying we're trying to hide stuff, some of us are not. What we're trying to do is present to you what's been brought to us for the last couple of years. The sewer coming to the business was the start of it. That's where it started. Well, then the school wanted to chime in, and they wanted to hook up, and they wanted to know the possibilities. So what we're doing here by having this meeting is trying to explain to you all the things that have been brought to us. Um, they said that you guys could have came to the meetings. I've seen some of you there. But that's what we're trying to explain to you is, the general idea was to the three thousand for the businesses. Well, then the school wants to tap in and they want to bring that up. Well, that's something that you guys should know. I mean, it's not like we're trying to hide this from you about, here's a master plan later on to bring this to you. We're trying to open it up so you know all the possibilities and all the things that have been brought forward to the board, if that makes sense, on why we keep mentioning three thousand and we've mentioned just down one eighty-nine. Does that make sense a little better? It's, it's just two propositions that have been made to us.
Okay. Anyone that hasn't spoke that would like to? Dave, go ahead.
I need two questions answered. What is our tax revenue offering system that's there now?
Off of the system that's there?
Off of our tax revenue.
The businesses?
Yes. What's our numbers on our income, our sales tax stuff that come off?
If you will look at the budget that's in the, in, in this, it'll tell you the last three years, and you can see what it's brought in in the last three years.
Has it increased?
It has increased by about fifteen thousand dollars. One year it went up higher, and I don't know why it went up higher that year, but.
So what was the expected increase with the sewer in that area?
The difference is twenty dollars an acre versus whatever you're going to get when you develop.
She said there's only one lot that a gas station can be put up, so that's-
That's the only thing that's been annexed so far.
That's the only thing that's there.
Yeah, that's the only-
You put the sewer in, you have to annex in order to get more revenue.
Right. We've got-
We've already got two annexation requests.
Requests, so.
There's about eighty acres between three thousand and twenty-four hundred that are being looked hard at, either requested to be annexed or is going to be in the future. And that's, that's the area outside of that one lot for the gas station. Everything north of that is potential development commercial, zone commercial.
So the expectation, when the sewer goes in, does the annexation-
Brian had worked with-
Yeah, that's, that's the expectation.
Maybe he could explain, what is a convenience store in South?
Right. Could you explain that, Brian?
Yeah, I just put those guys' notes to-
Okay. Look, Brian, he's, he's our planner and he works for South Jordan, so he can give you some numbers.
My, my, my full-time job is chasing businesses from the city. That's what I do for a living. I'm the economic development director for South Jordan City all the time. Um, I can tell you that, you know, and we had a, a big discussion about this a couple of months ago, about what kind of businesses I think can come into that area. You're not going to get a Home Depot. If we got a Home Depot in there, our problem's resolved. Got a Costco in there, problem's solved. Costco's probably worth about a million dollars a year.
We want it.
Yeah, good luck. Took me seven years to get one in South Jordan. We have over eighty-two thousand people, so you don't want that kind of bug. You don't want to do what it's take, it's going to take to get it. Um, you know, a, a convenience store in South Jordan, um, I get, every month I get a, a, a report from the state. I'm not allowed to say exactly which store, but I can tell you generalities. But a convenience store is worth about twenty thousand to twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year to a city. You've got to realize, you know, you pay that seven and a quarter, or we are up here, seven percent in sales tax. Well, there's two parts. So cities get one percent of that. And, but that's split. So there's a point of sale and a population that is split fifty-fifty. So the point of sale, so that's why a huge amount of money that goes into the town's coffers from the sales tax standpoint comes from, uh, the Bingley property, from, uh, stake or parcels. We get half a percent of whatever the sales are out of that, um, thing. The state gets about four percent, and, and then this other half a percent, it goes into this big pot. And then it, and it's from all of the money in all of the state, and then it goes back to all of the towns, cities, counties, based on their populations. So in theory, we put money into there, somebody in, in Magna gets part of our sales tax, we get part of theirs. I mean, but there's, they just put it in this big pot and, and, and from what I've noticed, we still get more money from our population than we get from point of sale. And it takes a lot of cities a lot of years before that's not true. Um, and, and the reason that the state has devised that way is because you folks, you go to Orem and spend money at R C Willie. And why, we're going to be fair for R C Willie to get all of the sales tax off, I'm sorry, Orem City to get all the sales tax. So they, they, they send some of that back based on population. Um, you know, the, the likelihood, if you look at the commercial world right now, which is kind of my life, and it's, as everybody knows, it's upside down. And it's upside down before COVID because of the internet. One of the good things that's happened is that, if you look at that tax list, that you'll, you'll now see eBay on there, on your list that you're getting money from. You'll see Amazon. You'll see Home Depot. You'll see these different places. And that's because if you have something shipped to your home, we now become the point of sale. And the state, you know, they're wrangled with the big businesses and everything for years, having to take it to court, to the Supreme Court. Anyway, so we now get a share of some of those sales as long as they're shipped to your home. Um, so, so those things help, um, the, you know, the- Um, so, so those things help, um, the, you know, the, the, the taxes on your homes, if it's your primary residence, the state constitution puts a fifty-five pers, or I'm sorry, forty-five percent tax break on your main residence, which means that you're paying fifty-five percent. So whatever your market value is, your tax is fifty-five percent. A, a commercial business is taxed at a hundred percent. Or if you have a second home somewhere, that's taxed at a hundred percent. Um, so that's some of the revenue that will come in. Um, right now, uh, I've talked to a lot of real, uh, commercial real estate brokers. We're all trying to figure out what the new world is. Um, I had one tell me that it's, the retail world is coming back, that it's different than, he and I, and we've both been doing this over thirty years, um, have ever seen. I mean, you know, the, the demands that, that these retail companies are putting on, uh, we were looking at a sporting goods store, and they said, okay, we'll come if you'll stock our store for us. And it's like, we'll never, the, the developers, we'll never, the owners, that we'll never make enough money off your market rate rent to pay that back. So there's, there's a lot of things, and, and we had a big, a big session on what they call tax income and financing and kind of economic development one-on-one about two months ago or three months ago. And I talked about, if, if, you know, if you want to, if, if you want to bring in big businesses, it's going to cost millions of dollars. And I don't think that's what we're proposing. If, if any of you are familiar with the district down in South Jordan, it's where the big Larry H. Miller twenty megaplex is. Um, that's been my life for the last sixteen years, helping bring businesses into there. And, you know, we're, we're in living fear that Larry H. Miller's going to close that theater because of the way movies deals are going. And they bring in all these people to come eat at the restaurants. And restaurants are what's happening right now. You might get some restaurants here. Um, you're, you're not going to probably get a lot of retail. Um, the retail is going to go by the Walmart. Retail loves to all be close together. So if you go here, you go there, you know, all in one shop. Um, the, the new, the new retail, they're, they're not adventurous, they don't want to go into areas that aren't proven. And so, but what is happening is a lot of what's similar to what we have developed there is these, they call it deflect space or office warehouse. And, you know, you can get some retail in there. I mean, we've got a carpet store going in there, and that, that's going to bring in some revenue. Um, you know, uh, there's room, you know, rumors of a boat dealership, uh, that I've talked to. Um, I get, on these properties that aren't annexed, I get on average three or four calls a week. Most of them want to put apartments in. I mean, if you, if you said, you, if you, if you were to say, yeah, we're going to put apartments in, you, you know, the twenty years Wes is talking, I'd probably go down to about two. You know, there's that high of demand, as you all know, for, for housing and whatnot. Uh, there will be probably a demand for some housing in that area. You're not going to fill that whole hundred acres with, with businesses. Typically, they'll probably go within, you know, five to seven hundred feet of the highway where they can have exposure, you can see their sun and different things. But, you know, the, the town, you know, fathers have talked about this, you know, they're, they're, the, the type of homes that we go in there, they can control. They can say, no, we're not going to allow apartments in there. We're, we're going to allow, you know, whatever, we're going to keep it at one acre lot, so we're going to, you know, as, as one gentleman pointed out, yeah, the state could take that, that, um, authority away from us. But if they did, it would, they would take it away from county, Heber City, whoever owns it. Um, you know, there's a lot of weird things that happen in the legislature if you fault that. Um, but, uh, you know, some of it's good, thank, you know, some of it's not. But, uh, to predict exactly what's going to happen there is kind of tough, because we're in this new world right now. But I, I can tell you that what's happening pretty much everywhere where commercial is happening today is more of this office warehouse type, um, businesses that are, generally, there are some sales tax produced there. But, you know, like I say, C-stores, convenience stores, about, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Sounds like a lot of money, but you need a lot of C-stores to run a city. So, so it takes, every, every individual store, it's, it's the aggregate of all of them.
The one thing, the one thing we are sure of is if we don't have a hand in, we get zip. That's the one sure thing we can bank on, yeah.
And I mean, when I, I, I'd say, well, you know, we get a million dollars a year from Costco, but that's maybe, when you, when you consider all the costs that it costs to, to have a policeman on the road, that might be twelve cops is what that pays for in, in a larger city. I mean, it takes a lot of, a lot of business to, uh, to run a city. And, and, and it's unfortunate in some ways that the state has designed the city, that they've made it so difficult to raise taxes. Um, and, you know, and, and, you know, I say, oh, that's good, but, but if you, if you look at how the tax system in Utah works, you, you might, is, is, the only new revenue the town gets is from new growth, unless they raise taxes. Um, so if, if, if your value on your home goes up, your tax rate goes down. Because they keep you revenue neutral. So if the town got a hundred thousand dollars in property taxes last year, they'll get a hundred thousand in property taxes this year, but your, but the rate goes different, and the only difference is the new growth. The new homes that are built would add on, so you might say, get a hundred and five or a hundred and ten thousand dollars next year depending on how many homes are built. And, um, and they have to have, you know, the, the town, and I'm not saying this is a bad thing, but they have to have what they call a truth in taxation hearing. And those are the ones where people come, and I'm sure that's what Mr. Shoemaker was referring to, the tax through the taxation hearings or.
Oh, yeah.
There are all, all kinds of ones. And, um, and so, I just, and I get told, Darryl, I mean, you know, my understanding of this process is, this is just to say if it's worth continuing the journey, or do we turn around and just say, uncle, um, whatever Heber wants to do, do they do? Or do we go to the next step? Do we spend the money to do the engineering? Do we do the master plan? Do we do the impact studies, the economic studies to say, okay, what do we really think this can happen here? You're right, it's going to cost some money. Um, and it's money well spent. And, and then if at some point we come in and go, ooh, this is just bad, they can bail. I, my understanding of the, the, I read the contract, is they can bail right up to the point where we start putting pipes in the ground.
Thank you, Brian. So with that, could we close the hearing?
We have one more gentleman right here.
I just want a few minutes, Brandon.
Okay.
We know it, she's Scott.
I don't need a bike, I don't think I need a bike. Uh, I don't have a bulletproof mask, I hope you guys are bad shots, okay? But we've elected these people to represent us, and we, at least the reason I do that is because I think they're smarter than me. And they take the time and they do the research, and they dig deep in there, and, and they look at the situation and, and believe, and we got to believe that they're going to do what's best for us and our quality of life. And that's why you guys are here tonight, because you're concerned about your quality of life. It's what brings us together, it's why we're here tonight. So, having said that, I, I think that they're going to look at the big picture, okay? And that's what we should all do. Anytime you say sewer in Charleston, you fill the room. Okay, it's a four-letter word, we fill the room, okay? But we have to look down the road a little bit, okay? I know that's, that maybe we're not concerned about it, but the people downriver from us are going to be concerned about water quality. And someday, someday, that's going to be the, that's going to be the elephant in the room. It's going to force our hand to do something that's going to be really ugly. We hear about the EPA or the state, water quality, all that. That's a real thing that could happen. We don't know when, we don't have a crystal ball. But that could happen someday. But more in the short term of things. Let's look at what we're just talking about in the near future. We're talking about, and for those of you who maybe over the years have participated in municipal, uh, you know, government like this, it's really important to do that, because your voice is heard and they miss it. Uh, yes, I'm on the, I'm on the planning commission and have been for a long time. And you miss me, uh, on that. But what, uh, we do these, uh, these, uh, the general plan. We get very little participation. It's really important you show up and you voice your opinion during those things, because that's already been done. And the consensus was that commercial goes out right where it's going, just like was part of the plan, that we agreed to and talked about. So there it is. But guess what we're stuck with? Carpet warehouses. Woo-hoo, big deal. That's still fun, isn't it? Right? That's still fun, that doesn't improve your quality of life. Why don't, what's wrong with putting sewer in there? It's up by the highway, it's not going to impact your front yard, it's not going to impact your walk on the block. But maybe something, if we have sewer in there, maybe some business that you might, might even visit. Maybe a convenience store, maybe a bar, a nice restaurant, or a coffee shop, or whatever, something that interests you. Something of value that would improve your quality of life. That's why I would support sewer, at least to them. Someday down the road, our hand may get forced to go on more global scale. I don't know, that's not what it's about tonight. But these people are going to look about that, and they're going to think about that. So, whatever you guys do, I support you. I know you're smarter at this and you've looked into it more than I have. So, good, good luck.
Thank you. Okay.
I just have one question.
Okay.
Some of the comments led me to believe that if we got a sewer to the commercial area, that you wouldn't have any control whether it goes all the way down to the school. If they want to pay for it, they can, they can extend that all the way from there to the school. Is that correct, or is that, am I led down the wrong road there?
If, if the state were to step in and say, we want, because it's a state-owned, you know, school, then it's possible they could, could force the sewer.
And then anybody along that road could take it back.
Could, could take it back.
Would have to, but could if they want.
They'd have to, correct?
Yeah, we're, the one thing we're solid on, Nick, is we're not going to force anybody to connect a sewer. And, yeah, I know you're not, but I think there's been some misunderstanding, yeah.
It'll cause growth.
Yeah, and, uh.
I agree with you, Nick, it doesn't matter where that sewer line goes. The further it goes, the more.
Growth.
Well, you open the door.
Yeah.
Okay?
Correct.
And so, uh, but in some respects, the doors are already open. Uh, this just gives us some control on what it might be.
If there's no other comments, then we will close the public meeting. And we will go back into, board, do you have any discussion? If not, we will go to possible action. So does somebody want to make a motion?
Okay, is it my turn? There's two things that I'm convinced of. I'm convinced that you could stand in the center of the Provo River with your hands and try and hold it back about as easy as you're going to be able to stop something coming down one eighty-nine towards three thousand. I think you got the same chance of standing there and trying to hold the Provo back with your hands. I, I just, I'm confident it's coming. And I'm also convinced that, I've said to my wife a thousand times, everywhere we move, everywhere we live and everywhere we sit, that the only way to care about what happens outside of your boundary is to own it. So, I never, I, we never talk in our house about anything that any of our neighbors are doing, because we don't own their property. And we own our own, and we're very concerned about what we do with our own property. Um, but we're not, we're not concerned about what happens outside of it, because I didn't buy it. So, that's item number two for me. So I will make a motion that we bring the sewer down to three thousand and stop there. Because I think it's super important that this city maintains control of what happens down one eighty-nine. And I, I can't tell every one of you how much this city means to me, and I haven't been here that long. I can't tell you how important it is for me to ride my bike down every one of your roads, and I'm going to get emotional here too, and see your horses, and see your farmland, and see everything that you have that is the reason that I came here. And I want to keep it this way, ever bit as bad as every one of you do. And I want to keep your taxes down. And I can tell you what it's like personally to have the city come to you and say, you're going to pay X amount of dollars if you want your road fixed. Or your road's not going to get fixed. And have everybody in this entire valley know how bad your road is. And so, I want to control what happens out there. I don't think we can stop it from coming. And I want the base core of this city to stay exactly like it is, as much as physically possible, just like every one of you do. Because I love it just as much as you do, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of a newcomer to it, and I'm lucky to be here, and I get that. But I, every day I tell my wife how lucky I am to live here with you. And to have, and to sit and watch every one of your horses. And I just bought a horse, and I don't even know how to have one. And I'm lucky to have it, and I'm lucky to have it, and I'm hoping that Lenny comes over and teaches me how to ride it someday after, because it's pregnant, and I can't wait until it folds. I love this place, and I want it to stay the same, ever bit as bad as you. And I want you all to know that. This is important to me as it is to you, and it's very painful for me to do this just as much as it is for you, because I think the same thing. If we keep the sewer out of here, maybe we could keep control, but I don't believe it. And I've sat here for a year debating this for three hours every month, and the same thing. We'd love to have every one of you come and be part of this with us, so that you can hear what we're talking about and know that we just have nothing but love for you and nothing but your concern. So I hope that every one of you know that this is not, the only financial thought of this is to save you from having to pay an extra fee to get your road fixed in the future. And to make sure that we can snowplow those roads for you during, during the time. And to make sure your taxes don't go up, because we know how hard the hit was on the last hit that you just had, and so did we. And we, and I'll tell, I can tell you what happened, I'm sorry, school board members, if you're here. But I'm going to tell you what happened. When they came in here and told us that we needed to try and promote getting them some more taxes, and it was a dogpile. And I was feeling kind of bad at the end of the meeting going, we don't want that. And we don't, we don't want anything in the core heart of this town, and, and our main goal is to save that for you. But anyway, I'm going to propose that we bring the sewer down to three thousand, and we stop it at three thousand, and then we evaluate it from there.
So is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I second it.
Okay.
And say amen to everything Scott says.
Okay, uh, any discussion from the rest of the board?
Well, I'd, I'd just like to say the same thing Scott says. I live a block away from where they're proposing to bring it down to the school. I don't want it there, I never have. But at the same time, we have to look at, like Scott said, I, I get a sit-in on a lot of the Heber meetings, I get a sit-in on a lot of stuff. And I know it, it's all hearsay, it's all this and that, but Heber will come if we don't control it. They will come and take it from us. It's pure and simple. Go ask the people of Red Ledges, go ask the people, they have plans to put in eighteen hundred homes up along that mountainside. They're talking about another police station up in Red Ledges alone, just to control that population. It will come, guys. I, I don't want to see it, I don't want to change, I don't want to move. Uh, I live right next door to where my wife was raised as a kid. I don't want to move, I don't want the sewer near me. That's just it. But like Scott said, if we can control some of this, why not take control of it and decide our own fate? Um, the board's been approached, like Vaughn said, about people annexing those properties in. So there is interest there, there's stuff like that, but also there's interest from Heber to annex back towards us. So that's something that you guys just need to decide and think about on what you want.
Darryl?
Um, I, I, my two bits worth is, I want to assure everybody here, we're going to do everything humanly possible. We trust Wes and the engineering people to make sure that there is going to be nothing land on our laps financially in doing this. We're trying to do this to protect ourselves against future tax increases. And if we can do it with the assurance of a firm as solid as these guys and so on, then I'm okay with doing it. We are not going to be burdening people with tax burdens to make this happen. And secondly, nobody's going to be forced to hook onto it. If you don't want to hook onto it, great. And most of us are going to, if we want to, we're not going to have an opportunity to anyway, but that's what it's about. And I'm in support of that, you know, going to three thousand, and that's where we call it a good.
Okay, I, I hope that all the rumors that's been going around has ceased tonight. I hope that if any of you have any questions on anything, that you will please come to us and talk with us. I don't, I mean. I don't, I mean, I'll tell you what, I can argue with you face to face, but when I turn around and turn back to you, you're my friend. Okay? I, I don't hold grudges. I do not try to tell people what to do. When I came into this position, I told everyone that the board would be, uh, in on everything that was brought to them, and I think they have, board, have you not? To decide what to do and what was do is right. Over the last three years as being mayor, I have learned an awful lot. I have done wrong things, I have done good things, I have done bad things. But I want you folks to know that I care about this community. I care about every person in here. You're my family. It's just like a big family. Yeah, we might not agree on everything, we may disagree on some things. But I am here to protect the people of this town and to help them understand why we do the things we do. I just want everybody to know that I have always been an open book, that I will be honest with any of you, and that no matter what the question is, I will answer it. And if I don't know, I'll find somebody that can. So I just wanna say thank you, thank you for letting me be your mayor. And I appreciate everything that every one of you do to help. I appreciate you coming in to being this meeting. I'd love to see this at every meeting. And every meeting won't be this long, I guarantee ya. But I love to see you, I love to see you here and to hear your input on what is going on that night. But we have had this out there for many, for two years anyway. Almost every meeting, we have discussed this sewer. Uh, there might've been a couple of months that we didn't do it, but there was nothing to, that hadn't moved forward. Since it started to move forward, there has been many decisions made and many things done to help us understand. Thank you. Okay.
Take the vote, Mayor.
Need a vote?
We do need a vote, we need a roll call vote. No? Okay, we don't...
Unless you want one.
Let's do a roll call vote. We're gonna do a roll call vote, just because this is an important issue. The motion on the floor is to bring the sewer line to 3,000 South, uh, and, and to start work on a master plan. So...
Excuse me, is it to bring the line or to continue to pursue the...
Yeah, well, to continue to pursue, to bring the line to 3,000 South.
Just wanna make sure, yeah.
Which is what we need to do. Okay? Roll call vote, Daryl.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it carries. Okay, the next on our agenda is Mike Peterson, which is annexation with, which he is not here, so we will table that.
Mike, he's celebrating the wedding of his son earlier today.
That's a stupid excuse.
Yes. You know, I mean, you, you can, you know, my, my, my opinion on this either will be, excuse me, even if he was here, but I don't know that we're ready to annex it. Even if we are, we, we wouldn't want to do that tonight, even though we could, because we've already held the official public hearing some months ago, but we still need a development agreement and some things in place to start. But I, my opinion is, is because of what we've talked about tonight, we're really not ready.
Okay.
Well, our previous answer was, we want an answer from Heber City and to know what position we're in in regard to that before we can do any further annexation. That, the firemen was, that was our position.
Okay.
And that hasn't changed.
I agree.
Yes.
Well, we give an update on Heber City. We do not have a yet. That term agreement is not done, but it's looking very favorable. They're meeting with Twin Creek, they're going through some of the items that will benefit Charleston, but that is not in a position to sign yet.
Right, right.
Well, that all depends on council vote, so...
Yeah. Okay, so...
My recommendations to, to, to table it to a future date, to future, I mean, a future date.
Okay, so we will, we will table the Mike Peterson annexation to a further date when we get more information.
Mayor, we need a vote.
Okay, we need a vote for that. Somebody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion that we table the annexation request by Mike Peterson?
Yeah.
I'll second that, too.
Okay, we got a motion, uh, by Daryl, seconded by Vaughn, that we, uh, table the annexation for Mike Peterson until we get further information. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, now we're up to, uh, uh, potential zone change for the Daybell property off of Probst Lane. Gene, is he here? Okay, and, uh, Rex is not here either, so I guess we...
He's gone.
I know, but he's still one of the...
The property owner's here.
Can I, can I just say something?
Yes.
So, I'm gonna cry. We've been put in a hard spot, um...
This is Lisa Daybell.
This is me, this is cold, I wouldn't sleep. Anyways, um, we hired some of the state agents who kinda took advantage of us, um, they put us in a hard spot where they were coming to a lot of people at the board, and, man, I'm not good at this, I'm a good public speaker too. I went lots of college boards doing it, but when it's emotional like this, it's hard. Anyways, I, from my understanding, they wasted a lot of your guys' time, and I'm super sorry about that, that was not my intention, and I did not know they were proposing what they were proposing. So I'm here to say sorry. I didn't know we were on the agenda tonight either. I have not received an official offer for our property. They have not officially given us anything to, other than to do a due diligence on it. I came in personally and did a little bit of my own due diligence, and I've spoken with some of you. I know what your intentions are for our property, and that's the way that it will be advertised. There needs to be a little bit of future communication so that we know that that's properly advertised correctly, and we would like to get it on the market correctly. My business has problems such that we can't operate it there anymore. And so we're, um, oh my God, what is my deal? Um, we are building a 20,000 square foot warehouse down in Spanish Fork right now. We're having to move the business down there, and so we're needing to sell our property. But it will be done with the right intent, and I'm sorry if it's offended anyone. I personally talked to Hebers tonight, and we'll be doing it the proper way. So we'll have further discussion about that. I want you guys to know how much I do appreciate the board. They have been phenomenal to our family. They've approved some things, they've taken care of this community, they've done a lot of things, um, that have allowed us to, to grow as a family and improve our family. So I wanna thank them personally. I also wanna thank Sean for offering all the teleconference because of the mom. I'm not able to come to the meetings, like really honestly, this is what you get if you get me at the meetings. I tried to put him to bed, and here I am. I got five convocations, I'm crying. So that has been a huge service to me to be able to see what's going on. Um, thank you. I'm sincerely sorry. If you have any questions after, I would love to answer them. And I have a 10-year-old son that is a cowboy. He claims to be a cowboy, broke his first calf in two points, or breakaway calf in 2.2 the other night. He would love to help you learn how to ride a horse. So let me know.
And possibly break one.
Yes, yes. He, he's broke, during COVID, he took on ponies. That's what he did in his spare, spare time, is riding ponies. So anyways, if you wanna learn how to ride a horse, his name's Dutton, and he'd be really good at that, so. Anyways, if you have, go ahead, Brian.
No, I, I gotta have perp permission to speak.
Okay, yes.
But I, I just want, Lisa called me and explained some of this, and, and I just wanted her to understand that, that what the other folks were wanting to do was take their property from residential agriculture, which is what all your homes are owned, to commercial. And we had a long talk about why that was not really a good idea and likely wouldn't happen, and Lisa explained why that was not her intent, and so when she says correctly advertise, you're meaning, just to tell you, I, meaning as residential agricultural, please.
Yes, as residential agriculture. We do have that 50-foot commercial easement, which is on the sign, and it is there. I mean, it's there, it's for purchase, it, whoever buys that piece of property has a 50-foot commercial easement that was allocated to the property from Utah, UDOT in 1960. That's something that the board should look at. I, you don't need to zone a commercial, you don't need to do anything with it, but whoever does purchase that property, that will be up to their discretion on what happens to that, and that is an access into the community that would be able to be utilized later. But other than that, yes, our building was built to commercial, the one building, but it, it will stay zoned residential R1 when we sell the property, unless someone decides to come and talk to you. I mean, is there every given right, just like the guy on the agenda today? I mean, they haven't made us an official offer. He was coming in to make a discussion with the board if it would be a possibility, but that has no reflection on who we are or what we have said. We have told him what it is, this is what it is. If you would like to go talk to the city, go and talk to the city, talk to the planning commission. They're open to having a discussion because that's what cities do, and that's what is on the agenda tonight. But I'm not out there saying, combine my commercial property, if that makes sense, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If there's not anything else, any staff reports? Any staff reports?
I forgot everything.
Okay, then I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion made by Daryl, seconded by, by Vaughn, that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We adjourn.
You did second the motion?
Yeah. You said what? I just asked you.
Just a package. Uh, I just do some stuff on top, but that's the package. Hey, I, you guys... This sewer wants the sewer brought down, and, um, like I said, I, I get a lot of things that... The health department is down there doing tests on the property because that property was not built to house all these kids. It was built for a stable. So, so they're, they're afraid that... So now they're asking for it, and we're like, no. So that's what we were saying, the warning is, you know?
Jim? The Mike Peterson's still on, tell them to turn, meetings are turned, now the stream off. Uh, the meeting's over. Can you turn the stream off, please? The meeting's over? Okay? Move out of the hallway, guys. So what, maybe it's gonna... Jim? I think the other one's trying to ask to cut. Oh, yeah, yeah. Right, right. That's what...